Day two of our second round of budget hearings. And without further ado, we'll get to County Administrator Barry Burton. Let's get us started, Barry.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have eight different groups today that we're going to be hearing about their budget, the issues that they're facing. And that'll continue our quest to move to next month when we make our, begin to dig into our actual final budget totals. First up today, we have the Clerk of the Circuit Court and Controller Ken Burke.
Welcome, Ken. Good to have you here this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you today. I am here to present the budget on behalf of the Clerk of the Circuit Court and Controller's office. We were given a budget target, and we have met that budget target. I really don't have anything to report as far as our budget is concerned. I'd be glad to answer any questions you all may have. The only other issue I wish to talk about is that the county has something big on the horizon as far as affecting us internally because it affects budgeting, purchasing, the financials, the HR for the county, and that's our ERP system. And this is something with Commissioner Peters and Commissioner Flowers and Commissioner Long being part of the BTS Board have been hearing about at those meetings. But I just want to really give a praise to our County Administrator on this. In the past, we've always had a little bit of friction in dealing with these types of relationships when addressing these issues. And I have to say, we're working so collaboratively in this process with the Clerk's office and our role and what we have to accomplish with the County Administrator in his role and what he has to accomplish with the budgeting and with the purchasing and with the HR Director, Ms. Crum. All of us have a big stake in this. It's a, they're tough decisions. We've been working with BTS and with the county's IT department to pave a way forward which is going to work best for this county. They are big decisions. We were behind in updating the Oracle and OPUS system, which we have to play catch-up, and that's what we're doing. We have a plan pretty much paved out for the next three years. And then what happens after that, we're going to be studying in the next three years to make the best decision for the, for the county and for the taxpayers. So I just wanted to give you a very brief update on that because that's going to take a significant amount of resources to go forward. But again, it talks about the integrity of the county and the integrity of our systems that we're able to make sure that we're doing everything properly in budgeting, purchasing, finance, and HR, which are important elements of the county government. So I just wanted to give you all an update on that. I'd be glad to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the Clerk? Well, we can't let him off that easy.
Commissioner, if I can, if I can just add, you know, the, Ken and his group have been instrumental in both the CARES Act funding and setting up structures and policies and things like that throughout this last year. They've been a real partner in trying to make sure that we, we do things right. I remember, you know, we're trying to change some things and Ken said, you know, change is not bad, but not too quick, okay? And make sure you do it right. And, and it's really good advice. So they've been a great partner in that. They've also been a great partner in, in looking where we have areas that we want to have a review and make sure our policies and procedures are tight. One of those is, that I'll just put out now because it's going to come back to you is the way we do affordable housing projects, you know? And we have lots of different roles in that. And so they have that fresh set of eyes to come in and look and from an audit standpoint, provide advice on how to improve. So it just, it's a great working relationship. Really appreciate their involvement and the way they work collaboratively with us to make sure that we're doing things right, so.
Thank you, Barry.
Yeah, well said, Barry. I totally echo those, those feelings. So I don't see any questions here, so.
You all have a good day. Thank you so much.
You too, Ken. Thank you.
Well, that one was easy. So next up is Dr. Thogmorton.
Good morning. Welcome, Dr. Thogmorton. Go ahead.
Oh, do I have to say stuff?
Yeah.
Well, we have had a really tough year. We had, of course, we survived, you know, COVID. And during that year, we, let's see, we certified over 1,000 of those. We've also, but, you know, did it impact our workload? Sure. Did it give us a high overall caseload? Yes. Don, if you could, you know, do those PowerPoints. Can we do that?
Actually, they're part of the package.
Okay, okay. I'm terrible. I'm terrible without a teleprompter. I apologize.
Turn your speaker on there if you don't mind. Thanks.
Hang on, let me pull it up then here.
Is there a third attachment?
I'll apologize. The, our main problem, though, is that we've had, do you guys, you remember the pill mill crisis? Our pill mill crisis was probably peaked in 2010, I suppose, and we ended up with quite a number of deaths. It was overt, though. You could see the, you could see the pharmacies, you could see the doctors' offices, you could see the lines. Well, our current, oh, there we go. That's helpful. Our current situation is, in Pinellas, our drug-related deaths have increased 29%. In the past two years, we're up about 200 fentanyl cases just, or drug ODE, opioid cases in Pinellas. We're up about 200. Pasco, similarly, an overall increase of well over 350. Our autopsies from just 2019 to 2020 increased 11% just in Pinellas. Pasco, 16%. And scene investigations are up. Our real problem was not so much COVID-19, although it was difficult. Our real problem is the drugs. So we're getting crushed with drugs. Our overall workload's up. I'd say, if you consider the lab, they're way up right now. They're up like 30%. Our, our ME workload's up, anywhere between 10 and 15%, depending on how you measure it. Our budget increase is 8%. So I think that we're in, we're definitely trying to find efficiencies. And if, part of the thing I wanted to show also is, when you're dealing with COVID-19 deaths, I did a little research, and you guys may be interested to know, there's a lot of debate about, and I certified personally, probably, actually did the death certificate on about, I'd say, 900 of the COVID-19 deaths. So I reviewed 900 sets of medical records. So I've become quite good at it. Most of those people had comorbidities. They were very, very ill. It was very, we did have a 17-year-old kid that died that didn't have comorbidities. He died of COVID. Why? Not really sure what his problem was. Probably he got a large inoculation initially, is my theory. But there are a lot of those that say, did the people die? And I encounter it because I certified a lot of them. Did they die of COVID or with COVID? And I can tell you, there's an objective way of measuring it. We just need to watch the overall numbers of death in, of deaths in Florida. And I made a chart of it. It's in your package. It tracks total Florida deaths of any cause. So you can't really, you can't fake a death. There's a human body that passed away. They have a death certificate, just like when you come into the world, you have a birth certificate. So there's a piece, there's an electronic record now, used to be a paper record, now it's electronic, of a deceased human body. So if you look at, you know, 2013, 2019, you know, I charted it out where it starts about 180,000 total deaths of all causes in Florida annually in 2013. Then it slowly creeps up, 185,000, 203,000, 205,000, and then 206,000 total deaths in Florida in 2019. There were supposed to be, if I remember, 28,000 total COVID, so COVID-certified deaths in Florida in 2020. Well, it goes from 206, and then we have this big peak to 239,000 deaths. So there's been an extra 33,000 deaths in 2020. No matter what the cause, it's, you know, did they die with COVID or of it? We've had excessive deaths. What's it from? There's a disease out there that supposedly killed, if you're being objective, 28,000 people. So that would account for some of it. The key here is, we've had a lot of immigration here. A lot of people are coming here because we're a bit freer than everybody else, it appears. The interesting thing will be to look at 2021 and 2022 to see if it returns to the original slope. If it did, we've had this big peak. This similar peak was in the pandemic, the Spanish flu pandemic in the United States. There was a peak. So whenever you have a true pandemic that actually kills people, you'll be muddling along with your original slope, there'll be a big jump, and then it'll return. So you've had excess deaths. You may even actually see kind of an inverse sine wave where you have your peak of deaths, and then the following years, you kind of drop below your slope because you have fewer people. And in this case, I would kind of expect that unless our massive population influx kind of doesn't allow that. We have excess number of people now. I don't know how many, but it's got to be a couple of hundred thousand people have moved here, so. And that's all I have. And any questions, I'll take them.
Thank you. Commissioner Flowers.
Were you going to say Dr. Flowers?
I was.
Just a question. On page one of two, under Budget Summary, it says it is anti, or IT is anti? I'm not sure.
Yes, I'd like to apologize. That's mislabeled. It should say Charges for Service there.
Okay.
It's a type of revenue.
Okay. Thank you. And my other question is, thank you so much for the explanation in this, defining the services. But as it relates to your two DNA specialists, do we have any backlog of any sort? Or are we keeping on top of any DNA sampling that we may receive requests for?
There's, ma'am, there's no backlog. We're, our turnaround time is excellent.
Okay, great. That's excellent to hear. Those are my only two questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Next up, Commissioners. He needs no introduction, with our Director for the Department of Health, Dr. Cho.
Welcome, Dr. Cho.
Hey, good morning, everybody. I like the setup here with a seat now. So just a few points regarding our budget. I'll try to stay away from COVID updates for the time being. Obviously, from a public health perspective, our focus this past year and a half, and really for a lot of our community partners, have been COVID. Regarding our staff, it's, they've put in a lot of effort and time as it pertains to contact tracing, testing, as well as vaccination efforts. And it's due to those efforts, due to the partnership, that we're in a good place. Our case count as of yesterday is 46 daily. Our percent positivity is 2.2%. And I can say that we had that 3% threshold at one point, and due to those efforts, again, we've been below that threshold since mid to late May. So that's amazing, and we're in a good place. A lot of it was vaccination efforts. If included the VA, VA vaccination efforts, about 50% of our population here has received at least one dose, 80% of those older than the age of 65. So really happy with those numbers, and hopefully those continue to increase and our numbers stay where they are. Beyond COVID, public health does, provided a multitude of different services to fulfill our mission to protect the community, to promote good health and good choices, and to improve the health of our community, whether it's through the medical services, providing that access to care for medical, dental, and facilitating mental health and substance abuse referrals, to our WIC nutrition, to our other communicable disease programs, working with STDs and HIV, to immunizations, to environmental services. We provide over 1.3 to 1.4 million services annually. And again, appreciate the continued support of the Board of County Commission. And for the next budget year, we are not asking for anything further than our ad ver lorum tax allotment. And a great example, the partnership has been that nurse in every school. I know that's something that we pushed out a few years ago. And due to the funding from the core contract, the support of the Board of County Commission, as well as other funding sources, we were, as of last year, able to achieve that nurse in every school. So thank you for that, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you. Dr. Cho, do you have a breakdown of any revenue generated from persons coming to the Health Department that have Medicaid versus private insurance?
We have very limited in terms of the private insurance, but we do have some Medicaid revenue breakdown. I can certainly, I don't have that, I don't think, on me now. I'm looking at my business manager, but I can certainly send that to you.
Yeah, I just, you know, the Health Department is a wonderful place. I've taken my grandson there for his dental at the one on Ninth Street, and I just see more and more people, you know, looking for consistency. And I know the Health Department would be a good, a wonderful place for that. I just want to say super kudos to all that you and your staff have been doing under the circumstances. They've remained very professional, and I really appreciate everything that they're doing. And thank you so much for the nurses in every school, because that really helped in trying to identify children that may have come to school sick and didn't have COVID, but maybe just had a cold or the flu, or teachers and staff. And I also see now where Pinellas County Schools is looking to hire LPNs, which will probably help with some of the costs, RNs versus LPNs and that. So excellent job. Thank you so much for all that you guys do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you. It feels like it's been a while since we've seen you.
He was okay with that.
I didn't complain.
Most people are fine with not seeing us for a while. Now that COVID is over, right? So everyone's saying that COVID is over. What, what can you tell us about the wind-down efforts for your department as far as vaccine testing? And also, I was reading another county is doing follow-up, I mean, they're, they're doing the, not the contact tracing, but the follow-up tracing as far as even like what we talked about early on as far as testing sewage and all those kind of different things to kind of look for spots. Are we doing any of that in Pinellas, or are we in a wind-down phase?
No, I, I think it's still, it's still going to be around. It's to the extent, we're going to base our response and our staffing based on the volume and the, and the disease burden. And again, hopefully, it does stay down, but if, God forbid, were to go up again, I think it's something that we would need to ramp down. In terms of some of our testing efforts, I think that's working with community partners, ensuring that there are access in our community and keeping an eye on where they can get testing. In terms of the vaccines, I think we're, we do have a separate COVID clinic outside of our immunization services that, that they can get, people who need the vaccine can still get vaccinated. And certainly, we're doing the big push this summer with the school-aged kids. We do have some school-based events coming up really shortly. But again, also ensuring that there is access to community. Keep in mind that we do have an active epidemiology and surveillance unit, so they're the ones that are going to be the eyes and ears, tracking it to see if any of the variants is a factor. I think a big test, and this is just Dr. Cho speaking on this one, is the, the big test is if it becomes part of the normal landscape of our respiratory viruses. I think the big test is going to be when the weather cools down a little bit, and we see an increase of not just COVID, but the other respiratory viruses.
Thank you very much. And I just, obviously, we're not done dealing with it, but it's good to continue to have that conversation. I appreciate your good work.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Seal.
I just want to echo what's been said, but thank you so much because I do believe that due to your department and your leadership and all of your staff, that we came through this storm.
Thank you.
Much better than I thought. So thank you.
Just one question. Back on the nurse, every, a nurse in every school, are you finding, are you getting feedback that that's helping with some of the, I want to say, mental health issues that the kids are facing? Or is it more, more to the physical, physical health side in the school?
I think the advantage of having that nurse in every school is they're the boots on the ground, the eyes, and potentially the first line for, to catch anything, both physical and mental health. What we've seen over the past few years is that they have been able to increase some of those referrals to mental health services as a result of the, of their presence, really. Obviously, it was particularly important during this past year during COVID, but even more so moving beyond COVID. I think they're, they can assist with the screening and, and early assessments of both physical and mental well-being.
So you have seen an uptick, then, in the referrals?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Gerard.
Just a couple. Have you had any issues with recruiting nurses for those positions? I know some of the hospitals are still having a problem.
Yeah, I think that's across the board in the industry, unfortunately. It's really the health industry as we're seeing those issues with the hospitals. Hopefully, that will settle down in the next month or two. But there has been turnovers and just making sure that we fill in anytime there is that vacancy, and working with the school board, obviously, regarding that.
An unrelated question. Have you heard any more about a booster for the COVID vaccines?
There, I know the studies are underway currently, but there's nothing been definitive. There's going to, there's going to be two lines of thoughts, whether, number one, the booster in terms of longevity. Do we need one every year, every two years? So that, that's to be determined. The other one is whether there's a booster needed to cover other variants. But those studies are underway, but nothing's solid at this point.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Dr. Cho. Good to see you here.
Good to see you. See you next season.
Next up, Commissioners, is our Department of Human Services, Yang Karen. She's going to kick Don over to the other side. All right. We're playing some musical chairs here. And Don, are you starting this off? Okay. So Don Mello with the Office of Management and Budget will begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to review a few points of the Human Services.
Pull your mic closer there.
Sorry. Good morning. Don Mello with the Office of Management and Budget. With us today is Karen Yachim, the Director of Human Services, along with Clark Scott. And I'd like to review a few points of the Human Services budget with you. Total FTEs remain unchanged from last year. Some revenue, recent retirements provided an opportunity to realign some positions to streamline oversight and management of contracts, MOUs, memorandum of understandings and procurement processes within the department. Lope's closer. I'm sorry. Okay. Then this initiative also increases the expertise within the homeless services and data performance, and is anticipated to save $29,940. Some revenue highlights. The department revenues total 7.2 million, which is an increase of 673,000 or 10.2% compared to last year. Emergency event revenues increased 1.2 million, or over 1,000%. The increase includes the American Rescue Plan Act funding that was received of 1.6 million. That was ordered by the Department of Health and Human Services, or, and HERSA, for the Pinellas County Healthcare for the Homeless Program. The ARPA increase is offset by the completion of the expanding capacity for coronavirus testing grant. Two new user fees are being added for the consumer protection area. This is related to the implementation of Acela, and these will be related to payments that are received or made by credit card or e-check. Looking at the expenditures, the total expenditures for the department is 68.1 million. It's an increase of 1.1 million from the prior year. I'm sorry. I'm on the page three. I'm looking at the expenditure section in the middle of the page. I'm looking at the expenditure section in the middle of the page. Homeless Prevention and Self-Sufficiency Program is increasing 111,000 or 1.6%. This increase includes additional 40,000 for the Rapid Rehousing Client Assistance Program and funds, which is, which our funds contracted with T111, and an additional 50,000 for the homeless continuum care funding of cold night shelters, if it's needed. When we're looking at the Pinellas County Healthcare, Health Program, that program is increasing 1.7 million or 5.9%. The healthcare program, sorry, the healthcare program has an increase of 1.8 million. This is due to the Pinellas County Healthcare Program Fund that is being depleted. We've used the resources that were available in that fund. And we forecasted this, this was anticipated and was not unknown to us. We, we used the funds, we knew new additions weren't going, going to be received. The Pinellas County Health Fund Program was created under a resolution back in FY12, fiscal year 12. And it was focused on the delivery of indigent healthcare services. So, in order to maintain the level of service that we currently have, an increase in general funds to replace those funds is needed. Behavioral Healthcare Services General Fund includes a $490,000 carry forward. This is of the original $500,000 for additional opioid funding that was provided last year. The original funding plan included strengthening the current hospital bridge and merchant transportation costs, as well as one-time funding for the Pinellas Matters Program. State Mandates Medicare Match Program, which should be on page four, near the top. This reflects a decrease of 1.4 million dollars from last year. We have received the actual projection from the state. It was received in late May. This is about a 9% reduction from the prior state fiscal year. Because the Justice Coordination Program, the expenses decreased 1.2 million or 23%. The reduction is due to the reallignment of personal services to another program, along with the sunsetting of previous grants received. Juvenile Detention Program increases 188,000 or 5.5%. And these are costs charged by the state of Florida for the juvenile detention facility operations in Pinellas County. This is in line with the historical averages, and Florida statute provides that the state and counties have a joint obligation to pay for these costs. Included in the budget is continuing funding for the Social Action Funding Program. It's a competitive grant program with a total budget in fiscal year 22 of 1.5 million dollars. The department also has oversight of the Drug Abuse Trust Fund. These are financial assistance grants for qualified local drug abuse treatment and education programs. The Drug Abuse Trust was established per Florida statute by the Board as a separate depository account to, to account for the additional assessments levied by the courts for, related to drug offenders. The trust fund revenues are anticipated to increase $3,300 or 10%, totaling $37,370. Trust fund expenditures remain unchanged at $40,000. This time, I'd like to turn the floor to Belinda Amundson.
Good morning, excuse me, Belinda Amundson, Performance Management Analyst in OMB. So, starting towards the top of page five, we're going to start working through the efficiencies. The first one is the latest update on the department's Acela implementation for consumer protection is that data migration phase has begun and once completed, user acceptance testing and training will begin. The department has also shifted some personnel a little bit to bring some more focus into the homeless system of care and streamline those processes. There are a couple of high-level threats the department is facing. The first one is currently the number of family shelters is insufficient for the county, and this is due to organizations pulling some support. The second one is the expiration of the CDC's residential eviction moratorium, which it looks like is still set to expire June 30th. This could increase the community's need for assistance. And with the housing and rental markets the way they are right now being so high, this could cause some real hardships for people within the community. The COVID impacts for the department, and this is at the bottom of page five and working into page six, outreach and healthcare delivery efforts have been restricted due to the CDC's social distancing guidelines. Many of the department's grants are associated with these efforts, and as a result, may impact revenue projections as healthcare systems have extended deadlines to complete implementation efforts. The second is the Adult Emergency Financial Assistance Program. May experience a decline in requests for financial.
Belinda, one second, I'm sorry to.
Yes.
Commissioner Long, you have a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but before you get too far away from this issue, did we know that the St. Pete Free Clinic was going to close their shelters?
I'll turn that over to Karen.
Did we?
Hi, good morning. I don't believe that that was a strategic plan of the St. Pete Free Clinic. I believe they announced that this year. So it's my understanding that that was not previously known to the community.
And so, did we, have we made any plans to pick up the lack of opportunity there?
What I can say is there's a lot of energy with multiple funders working with the HLA to really take a look at the front door, so looking at how systems are connecting. There are a lot of federal dollars being infused into the homeless system of care. We do have a meeting next week to really look at the strategic way that we can align funding so that we do not have so many gaps with losing those beds in our community.
And how many beds were the, they were providing?
I believe they were eight, but they were eight large family units, so.
And that's part of our biggest gap, isn't it?
Correct, yes. So there's a lot of work being done. So I can say next week, multiple funders are meeting to really look at how we can creatively come up with a solution for that problem.
And can I? And then, when you, when you figure all of that out, can you come back and let us know, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Excuse me, go ahead, Belinda.
Excuse me. So, another COVID impact for the department was the Adult Emergency Financial Assistance Program. It may experience a decline in requests for financial assistance, and that's just a shift for people being redirected to apply under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. For COVID-19 response, Human Services has operated the non-congregate sheltering program for homeless individuals and families that tested positive for COVID-19 that needed a safe place to isolate and quarantine but did not meet hospital admission criteria. And more than 200 individuals and families were served through this program. We've also answered the emergency management acute care calls to ensure transportation for clients assessing, accessing care at the freestanding crisis stabilization units to hospitals that provide these services. And lastly, during COVID, eight staff were assigned to vaccine deployment sites for various lengths of time. And this concludes the budget summary for Human Services, and I'll turn it over to Karen for additional comments.
Morning, Karen. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having me. I just want to introduce my team again. So I have Clark Scott with me, so he's the Division Director of our Business Services. And then I have Abigail Stanton, our Director of Contracts. So she was part of the new realignment that was discussed earlier. Over the last year, I just want to say that Human Services has really worked to improve efficiencies in both the services that we deliver from our department, as well as maximizing resources with community partners. Over the next fiscal year, we're going to be working to really take a hard look at access to services. We really think that there are, there's a lot of work to be done across all of our systems of care. As you're aware, we have two large-scale initiatives that we're working with, with KPMG, so the Optimal Data Set and the Coordinated Access Model. And I just want to again state for this group that we have a real opportunity with the Coordinated Access Model to really be a pioneer in both the state and, I believe, the nation, to really look at this being a preventative model, so being the first call. So not a call related to crisis, but really being that first call where if you are concerned that you're possibly having symptoms of behavioral health or a loved one, this really is that first call for one assessment, one level of care, warm handoff, and live scheduling to our partners. Human Services really excels at utilizing data across multiple systems. We work very closely with Safety and Emergency Services to look at how data can drive our community response with services. As the medical examiner stated, we had the worst year that we've ever had with substance-related deaths ending at 546. And again, that is a national trend, so recent research is showing that nationally we are 30% higher of deaths nationwide than we were in previous years during the pandemic. What we're really focusing on is how we can increase access, but from various access points. So not just from possibly law enforcement, but really looking at how we can spread the gap and really open up access to substance use treatment, whether that's medication-assisted treatment, substance use counseling, case management, and peer supports. Some of those initiatives include direct referrals from EMS to treatment, increase naloxone to first responders, but pairing that with linking those individuals to treatment. We're looking at expanding our PIC team referrals to high utilizers of 911. We are also increasing telehealth at both Bayside and our mobile medical van, so linking patients that are involved in homeless, or healthcare for the homeless, directly to behavioral health services from those access points. We are also having ongoing conversations with local hospital partners to implement our Pinellas Matters Program. So again, that is a warm handoff and a direct linkage to treatment from the emergency department where patients are going due to overdose. Additionally, we are always seeking new grant opportunities to really bring innovative services into our community. It's our continued goal that with increased access points to services that we can try to make a tremendous effort with decreasing the number of deaths that we're seeing in our community. As you know, Human Services maintains over $20 million in federal and state grant funding, and really, that is really looking at innovative programs within the community. One of those is our Healthcare for the Homeless Program. As Don mentioned, we did receive $1.6 million in American Rescue Act funding specific to that program from HERSA. We've combined that funding with some COVID cares dollars and additional HERSA funding for capital improvement, and we are looking to expand Bayside Clinic from 3,000 square feet to 5,500 square feet. So we'll be adding four exam rooms with negative pressure, a second lobby, so that in the, in the event that we have a patient that comes onsite that needs isolation, they'll be secure in the clinic. We're adding a behavioral health wing so that we can have onsite behavioral health services and telehealth services to those patients. And we're also taking a better look at how to maximize the staff side of the building to bring crucial staff back to the clinic who had to be relocated due to space needs. Additionally, with that funding, we're going to be looking at street medicine. So I know we've talked about that before, and I believe Daisy presented that at the last Budget Information Session last year. But this funding is going to allow us to develop a street team that will be primary care, dental care, and behavioral healthcare, working with individuals who are hard to reach, so not connected to shelter, not connected to our current program, and delivering services to them, really meeting them where they are to lessen their reliance on the emergency departments, build rapport with those individuals with an attempt to bring them back to the medical home. Additionally, we've procured three additional grants this past year, so strengthening our adult drug court for victims of sexual abuse and human trafficking. We have also enhanced services for our crossover youth, so individuals who are both involved with the dependency system and the delinquency system. And additionally, we have three procurements that are coming or live. So our PSET 2.0, so again, that's the high utilizers, the top 33. Our time was up for that with the previous provider. We had reached our five years. We saw such tremendous success with those individuals, so that is currently in the reprocurement process as we speak. We have the Syringe Exchange Program coming online as well, thank you to the ordinance that was passed earlier this year. And again, we're super excited about our RFP for our mobile medical van replacement. So that van has reached its, its life term, so we'll be having a new van coming online with increased technology, and we're really trying to focus on increased telehealth as well with that vehicle. Additionally, with maximizing efforts to better serve our residents and using technology to enhance services we provide, we have been able to increase services to our veterans by 2,000 services. So last year, we provided 4,900 services, which is 2,000 greater than the year before. Our Community Connection staff has continued to use technology to increase assistance to individuals applying for a health program. So not only can they use the electronic application, they can now process the entire application via phone, which is extremely helpful for individuals who are struggling with some technology needs. And lastly, another process that we're extremely proud of is our disability advocacy team maintains an over 70% approval rating for Social Security disability applications, and the national average is 22%. So we're really doing a great job there. I could not end the discussion with just kind of highlighting, again, some of the efforts that our team did during the pandemic. So as you know, we had 30 staff that were deployed for seven months for the COVID cares program. And again, that was 8,600 households that were assisted by this team, 21,000 payments totaling $24.6 million. Not only were the staff providing those direct services, they were working very, very hard to streamline that process, to make sure that it was efficient, and we were able to spend that money as quickly as we could to get it in the hands of our residents. As Belinda mentioned, we are still running the non-congregate sheltering process for homeless individuals and families who need safe isolation and quarantine. And just something I wanted to make sure that this board was aware, because of the innovation with that project, we have won two national awards. So we are receiving the Best in Category Award at NACO, and then the Innovative Practice Award at NACO. So those will be received later this year. And just to end, I want to thank you all for your continued support of our department, and I really want to thank our staff. They've done a tremendous job and continue to do a tremendous job, especially coming back online. Thank you.
Sounds like you've been a little busy.
You've been busy.
Wow, pretty amazing. You taught, you touched on the 33 high utilizers. And I was just going to ask, before you got to the point that you made about it, the original 33, what's the status of, just in general, how that's gone down and then probably added back and that kind of thing? How's that, how does that work out for you?
So, in closing, so probably for the last year and a half to two years, a lot of work was done to transition those clients to different levels of care. So I would say that the provider did an outstanding job with transitioning those individuals that were still open. We did see some challenges, so some did end up incarcerated. But again, I think that the success outweighs any, any type of negative outcome that occurred with that team.
So on the procurement of a new contractor, you'll have a new group of folks identified?
Correct.
And then start working?
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Commissioner Seal.
So basically, wasn't it 28 individuals that were, that we did help over the five-year period of time?
No, I think we started with 33.
I know, we started with 33.
And then I believe we, we added some initially, and then once we knew that we were ramping down, then we, we stopped adding individuals. So I can get the total net number of clients. I can get that to you if you would like.
Okay. I'm just kind of interested in that. And then, I thought that CASA was going to open up a family shelter near St. Anthony's Hospital. There were some old apartments that they used to use, and so I was just curious where that was.
I can follow up with that on the meeting that we have on Friday. I have not heard that in the meetings that I've been in lately. But again, we're meeting Friday, so I can follow up and circle back.
Okay. And then, as far as, two other things, 211 funding, did that, is that increasing at all?
I don't believe the overall 211 funding is increasing. I think what we're looking to do is work in partnership on the consultant to see what the needs are to modernize and to really enhance those connections. So that may come at a later date.
Okay, so are we still looking at the CIE model?
I believe that we're going to be meeting with the consultant to start having those conversations. And again, that is what we've also talked to KPMG about as well. So looking at how we can kind of merge both processes as we're working together on that.
Okay. Thank you. That was an excellent report, and thank you, really, to you and your staff. I mean, outstanding service this year. Always outstanding, but especially this year.
Thank you so much.
Definitely, definitely frontline with a lot of folks that needed a lot of help, so thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking around, do we, is Jeffrey here? Do you know? He's not, okay. So if we can move on, we'll go to Safety and Emergency Services. And we have Jim Fogarty and Jason Miller, so Jason will kick it off.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Jason Miller with the Office of Management and Budget. I'm joined by Belinda Adamson, who's our performance analyst, Jim Fogarty, our department director, and Jody Sutler, who is our division director for ambulance billing and financial services. This morning, we will be discussing the Safety and Emergency Services Department. Just to orient yourselves to the department briefly, we have six programs within Safety and Emergency Services. We have our Regional 911, radio and technology, fire regional services, our EMS ambulance program, EMS first responders, and our unincorporated fire districts. So briefly, I'll hand it over to Belinda for a performance summary.
Good morning again. Thank you. SES uses their metrics and performance data very heavily to analyze and continually monitor their operations to ensure that they're meeting or exceeding their goals. The department has been shifting some staff resources to continue to support staff and bring about additional operational and financial efficiencies. We continue to work on improving recruitment and retention efforts in the Regional 911 Center. A number of initiatives have been implemented to support employees, and we continue to monitor the impact of these initiatives. To date, the turnover has decreased down to 16%, which compares to the industry average of about 20%. Our growth management plan, which includes strategies to reduce the growth of emergency services in comparison to population growth, is in progress. Currently, we are collaborating with other agencies on case management and fall prevention strategies, and you'll hear later on, we have entered a decision package related to this program. So I'll turn this discussion back over to Jason, who will summarize the department's
Thank you, and as we get into the budget portion, we'll be beginning on the top of page two of the document with our five-year staffing summary. You can see for fiscal year '22, there's been a net decrease of one FTE within Safety and Emergency Services, and that was deleting a vacant 911 quality assurance specialist position. Those responsibilities have been turned over to a third-party vendor, so we no longer needed that position within the department. Moving on to the budget analysis and the revenues, we'll look at the revenues for the department at a fund level. Just real quick to remind you, these are budgeted at a 95% level, as allowed by state statute. Beginning first with our emergency communications 911 system fund, this fund's revenues are increasing by almost $300,000 or about 6.3%. This revenue source is a monthly tax on mobile phone bills and landlines, and did not experience any sort of a COVID-19 impact last year. And the fund also received a grant in the current fiscal year for almost $660,000. This fund also receives a general fund transfer that is increasing by about $437,000 this fiscal year. This program does not generate enough revenue through those taxes that I just detailed, so it needs a general fund transfer to be able to support all the expenditures within the fund. And I believe this session, or this year's session, that became a legislative priority for the county. Moving on next to our intergovernmental radio communications fund, this fund's revenue source is revenue from moving violations. For every moving violation issued within the county, we receive $12.50 into this fund. Those revenues are increasing quite dramatically this year, as last year we anticipated quite a large drop-off in moving violation revenue to fewer number of people moving about the county and less drivers on the road. So for fiscal year '22, we're looking to bring that back up to a normalized level, so it's increasing just over $300,000. This fund also receives a general fund transfer. And similar, we increased that general fund transfer so much last year to be able to cover the decline that we were anticipating, and so for this year, since we had transferred such a large amount, we were able to reduce that this year. Moving on to our emergency medical service fund, there are two main revenue components to this fund. We have our ad valorem taxes and our ambulance service fees. At the time of publication for this document, we had estimates of a 4% increase in ad valorem revenues. That's since come out higher at about 7%. So that line is increasing by $5.2 million instead of the 3 that's noted on the document. And then our ambulance service fees are decreasing slightly by about 1.5%, and that's based on a decreased transport volume that we've experienced. Within the miscellaneous revenues on the chart on the bottom of page three, you'll see quite a large increase in that percentage and dollar amount. That's due to budgeting our public emergency medical transportation revenue for the first time. We've received that revenue for the past two years, but we've never budgeted it before, so this is the first time budgeting it. So that creates quite an increase within that category. Onto the department's user fee schedule on page four. The department is proposing to increase fees for ambulance transports by 2% and 9.6% and 10.7% for the ambulance membership program. Just as a quick note, the average among our peers for ambulance transport is $820, and then ours will be about $790 for fiscal year '22. Moving into the expenditures, we'll look at the expenditures at a program level, and we'll begin with our emergency communications program. That's both general funded and 911-funded. That program's expenditures are increasing slightly by about $200,000. And this was the program that had the one reduction in FTE. They also had quite a large capital expenditure in the current year doing a large project. That project will be wrapping up this year, so there's a lower need for capital costs in fiscal year '22. Moving on to page six in the radio and technology program, that program's expenditures are decreasing by about $100,000. Again, they also had a large capital item happening in fiscal year '21, so fiscal year '22 shows a decline in the capital category. Our fire regional services program, which is part of the general fund, that's increasing slightly by about $24,000. That increase is driven by a larger need for technical rescue training reimbursement. In our EMS program, which is part of the EMS fund, there is an increase of $1.6 million to, again, budget for the first time, the transfer to the state for that public emergency medical transportation program. Again, that hadn't been budgeted in the past, so this will be the first time. That's a cost of about $1.6 million, and if you net the revenue that I mentioned earlier with this cost, it's a net revenue to the county of just over $3 million. Moving on to our EMS first responder program, again, part of the EMS fund, this program's expenditures are increasing about $8.5 million. $5 million of that is for the replacement of our electrocardiogram equipment, and then also $750,000 of that is for replacement of the ballistic vests for our first responders. There's also a system enhancement added to this program where we'll be adding funding for a seat in the Palm Harbor District that will be funded at a 50% level within the first year, and then up to 100% in fiscal year '23 and thereafter. Moving on to the top of page eight, we have our fire district funds, which is our 12 dependent fire districts. At the time of this document's publication, we are still going through the numbers and analyzing the districts. Based on our initial analysis, it's not looking like there are any mileage increases needed for any of the districts, and there is a potential for a handful, maybe five to six districts where we can look at doing a reduction or a rollback rate. The department has eight decision packages for fiscal year '22, six of them, I'm sorry, five of them require or are asking for FTE, a total of six FTE, and three are one-time And then to the top of page nine, there's a few threats we wanted to call out to the department with regards to decreased ambulance revenues. You can see on the document where we've listed out over the past few years what those reductions have been, and then also the Medicaid transition to managed medical assistance plans back in FY '14. And that's what we had for the budget section. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help. And if not, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Hold on one minute.
Oh, sure. On the decision packages, on the onsite mental health, is that an increase to current programming, or is it, what is our current level of programming for that?
So I do believe that would be a supplement at all.
Good morning. Jim Fogarty, Director of Safety and Emergency Services. That program is the result of a pilot project that we had conducted with our employee assistance, employee benefit program, where that would provide onsite coverage for consultation. Now, we've got an existing crisis council onsite with a volunteer chaplain program. We've got the employee assistance program, so we've got several things already in place, and this was a supplement to that.
No, I mean, it makes perfect sense. I guess I just thought we, well, I guess I wasn't aware what we did before, so.
Right. We're still working on some alternatives as well. This is one of the programs that there might be alternatives to.
Okay. Mr. Burton, let's talk. Well, there's eight decision packages here, so we're still going through those. And just so we get kind of a feel, remember we talked about looking at our Office of Management and Budget? Well, several of the things that Jason provides and services, you know, those are part of the proposal to pull those within the department, some of the financial analysis, looking at the data with the fire districts and their levies and all those types of things. That's part of that kind of reorganization that we're looking at, and so you'll see that kind of come together before our recommendation next month.
Sure, no, it just, it jumped out at me. I just was curious about it. And then the second question I had was on the user fee schedule on the fireworks sales permit. I was curious how many permits we issued and when the last time that fee was increased, and if there's a comparison to other counties, and any of those kind of basic info on the fire fee.
As of right now, I don't have that information in terms of fireworks. The fireworks permits are generally issued by the local jurisdiction, the fire departments, and that's done locally.
Okay. Just curious if anything had changed since the legislature had altered the rules on when fireworks could be used and those kind of things, and...
In terms of the sheriff's enforcement of that, there's no anticipated changes this year that I'm aware of.
Yeah, well, I figured that part.
If we can, maybe let Jim kind of cover some of his operational issues.
Sure.
I think, just like you saw last, they've been very busy, and they've accomplished a lot this past year.
That's true. I wanted to acknowledge my staff, the 200 folks that are Safety and Emergency Services, and all the emergency first responders that are out there for what can only be described as a pretty remarkable year and an unremarkable year at the same time. From the creation of a community-based vaccine program to the continuation of 911 services throughout COVID, even though those operators themselves were subject in some contracted COVID, to answering the phone calls within the state standard religiously through busy times and bad. It's been an incredible effort. We've had real successful partnerships with some of our departments, Human Services, emergency management, the local fire departments. And so it's been a fairly successful year, but not without some challenges. You know, the challenges include a workforce that's been really stressed and worked hard from the paramedics that have been spending hours and days and months in full what you would consider hazmat garb, as they respond, developing special procedures and protocols, and all the training and education associated with that. To the stress, the family stress of long and hard work hours and overtime, and we acknowledge that effort and sacrifice, which continues to this day, to call volumes that have gone from a low in mid-last year to a high. Right now, we're logging about 1,900 to 2,000 calls, 911 calls daily, compared to about 1,500 or 1,600 calls that occurred about two years ago daily. And we suspect that trend is here to stay. That's probably not a variation. It's going to be here to stay. We've done some pretty remarkable things over the last several years. One of those things just came from a meeting with the turnover of the 911 Center. Judith Wosinkowski Price reports our turnover year-to-date is about 16.5%. And as a comparison from a 911 national average, although there are not any standard reports you can find, but from her contacts in APCO, that's about a 26% or 27% turnover industry standard-wise, and then from a call center standard percentage of 40%. So the Amazons that handle call centers have about a 40% turnover rate. Year-to-date in Pinellas County, that's just a little under 17%.
Jim, on that turnover, again, it's great on the improvements, but what continues to be maybe the top reason or two for that turnover, which sounds like it's industry norm, but what is that?
When you look at turnover, we look at it from sort of the average trend. If you look at retirements, we have a workforce retirement, which is a very small proportion of that, but in the zero, meaning we hire them to the three-year mode, some don't successfully make it through the training. About 10, maybe 15% don't successfully make it through the training. It might not be the right fit. Some are not familiar or used to working the long hours and the shift work. Some have relocation issues, family issues, and some just leave for promotional purposes. For instance, in 7% of the case, although it reports as a turnover, they get promoted within the county. There's two people, for instance, this year were promoted to other parts within the county as part of the turnover.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Fire and emergency services, the response to the community, not only with COVID, but everything else that's out there from traumatic injury. We've had changeover in helicopter service. We've had issues with bed delays in hospitals. Hospitals continue to have staffing issues. But despite all that, we've got, you know, we've got contingency plans in place. We had to go to what was called condition yellow in terms of our response mode, where there were different turnover procedures at a hospital emergency department to minimize the bed delays. There were different approaches to different types of patients. We were not, we were not, we were prepared to, but we were not required to go to any condition red, which would have instituted even more dramatic changes to those protocols. It was not necessary, and right now, we're back to condition green, which is nearly next to normal. It's not quite normal, but it's next to normal. We have a hospital system status plan that we put in place in conjunction with our hospitals, so when we have some bed delays and one or two hospitals are causing stress on other hospitals, we take control of the delivery of patients to hospitals in a system status plan. We've had some challenges with our ambulance billing and revenue, although Jody has done a remarkable job in putting some pilot projects together to increase throughput and revenue. The pre-hospital emergency medical program is one of them, the GOEMS, where we partner with an outside agency to look at old and dated accounts associated with auto crashes and increase revenue. And so we've had some efficiencies with that. We've done some outsourcing, things like our question call center and putting those callers in a position where the person can be given the answer with the first pickup of the phone rather than transfer to two or three people. of the phone, rather than transfer to two or three people to get the right answer, and likewise. We've got a couple of decision packages that I think are really important. One of those decision package deals with growth management. We've had about three years' worth of success in looking at the different ways we can manage the growth of emergency services and the types of services that are delivered to the public. And so it's possible and it can be managed. The goal would be to manage it to no greater than the growth of the population. So if the population grows at 2%, the growth of services should grow at 2%. And a lot of that growth is in what you would consider non-emergency type of issues, social issues, homelessness issues, things that hit the safety net that we're forced to respond in sort of an emergent way. And so we're developing through growth management, better ways to address those, things like priority dispatch, things like complex case review, things like data sharing with some of our partner agencies like human services. And we've tested those ideas for many years, and we know that they work. We've got a strategy for those, and now we're trying to put that into a formal program. And that's the, the growth management decision package. We've got other decisions packages, but I'll stop there and answer any questions you might have.
On the family membership program that you have, how is that going overall? And what are the costs on it, on a, on a normal transport versus not having that service ahead of time? I imagine somebody would get that if they anticipate frequent usage. Are those, is that frequent non-emergency usage, or is that any usage? If they have an emergency or they have a regular transport, is it that reduced cost if they have the program? Kind of like an insurance policy, or?
That's correct. And in general, well, I'll answer, but Jody Sessler probably would be in a better position to answer that. But in general, that program statutorily must be sound. It must not make any money, must not lose any money. It has to be budgetarily neutral. But, but generally, it offsets the cost, the uninsured cost, so if someone has insurance, it doesn't replace that insurance, it covers the uninsured cost. And that is true both for emergency service and then non-emergency service, the interfacility hospital service. And Jody, I'll maybe ask if you had any further information.
Oh, sure. Good morning. Jody Sessler, Division Director for Financial Services and Ambulance Billing. The average cost of ambulance transport is about $780. So if, we're seeing co-pays as for a Medicare replacement plan, we're seeing an average co-pay of about $250, $300. So one transport, and it's paid for itself. Also, if you don't have insurance, it provides a 20% discount. So we've seen rising co-pays and deductibles, so this program is definitely a benefit for our citizens.
And how, and how do we get the word out again, just for that option?
We are working with our marketing and communications department, and we're doing everything from ads. We've done ads on Bay News 9, we're using social media, we put it in the newspaper, we reach out to our top 50 assisted living facilities where they have a high number of responses, and, and send them all the marketing information, our hospitals, we send them our information. We'll do presentations if, if a, like a senior living home, for example, on Top of the World, if they want us to come out and do a presentation, we'll do that.
Excellent. Sounds good. Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
I just had a question about, I know that Sunstar's had issues with staffing, and that we're looking at the contract to see if there's a way to help them out. Do you know what the impact might be, or is that too preliminary?
It's, it's preliminary. We've been in close communication with Mark Postma and John Peterson, the CEO and the CEO of those organizations, and, and they've been forthright and honest, and so we're doing an analysis of just exactly what the issues are. We've got, we've got some indication that it is nationwide issue in terms of the ability to recruit and, and then retain. For instance, a paramedic could choose to work inside a hospital or could choose to work on the streets, and often the case, they can make more money inside the hospital. And so, so we're working on those issues. We have a performance-based contract with the ambulance contractor, so we're looking to make sure that the performance challenges that they're faced are, are, are real and legitimate, and not something that's just temporary. For instance, their, their model is built on an efficiency of getting in and out of the hospital, so a certain, 28 minutes, and, and, and the numbers work, 38 minutes, 48 minutes, and they don't. And, and so they've over a year have had issues with hospital bed delays, and it's not just the bed delay when they're forced to go from one hospital to a further hospital. For instance, if the call is in downtown Clearwater, and Morton Plant would have been the closest hospital, but if Morton Plant's on bed delay, and they're forced to go to La Grava Medical Center, or they're forced to go to Northside, that in and of itself adds time to the call. So the average time on call has increased dramatically, sustained increase, even though the call volumes during COVID were down dramatically. The, the time on task had increased dramatically at the same time the call volume. So the, as an, as an agency, their revenue stream dropped because they're, they're paid on a, how many calls they run basis, and their, their costs increased. To the vendor's benefit, they, they never furloughed any of their employees during COVID. They covered the cost of someone who has exposed or had to quarantine, and just like all the other businesses, they have some economic challenges. And again, they're not a small business, so they don't qualify for some of the funds associated with the small business recovery, they're a large business. And they're, and they're not a government entity, so they don't, they don't qualify for some of that. So we're working closely with them, we're prepared to brief the county commissioner probably in a week or two on some of the, on some of the proposals.
So do you know, I, I know that hospitals are also having a hard time getting paramedics because, because, do you know what the basic salary comparison is between, say, Sunstar or a hospital EMS person, or paramedic, and what they are paying at Sunstar?
We do. I have, I have an analysis, part of the packets that we'd be briefing the county administrator on is the analysis, the wage scale of a, you know, of a typical paramedic that might work for Sunstar compared to a typical paramedic that might work for, say, Manatee County or, or Clearwater Fire Department. So, so we have that. Suffices to say that the Sunstar paramedics are, are generally on the lower end of the scale in terms of pay.
I know the fire departments pay a lot more and have greater benefits, so, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Seal.
Just to kind of follow up on that, because that was where I was thinking. So the turnover in the fire departments and the EMS personnel, do you know if that has been a problem, or whether they have stayed employed because of the benefits and the wages?
I, I don't know to the detail that I know of the ambulance contract, because we've been dealing directly with the ambulance, but, but in general, the fire service has less turnover, although that's not to say they don't have no turnover. They've had some challenges with turnover these past years, because they're, they're under the same level of stress and overtime, particularly with the department stepping up to the plate to conduct a vaccine program. And at the same time, because many of the higher educational institutions that create paramedics, new paramedics, were shut down for nearly a year. The St. Pete College, for example, had no students go through that system for nearly a year. And in our system, we, we require several hundred new paramedics a year just to stay even. So yes, the, the fire departments have the turnover. I doubt if it's to the same extent, they've, they've got a public safety pension system, and they've got, but in many of those cases, it's a dual role employment, both fire role and a paramedic role.
Right, right. My next question is, could you explain to me the public emergency medical transportation revenues versus transfer? So how much do we transfer? It says an increase of 1.6 million, so how much do we transfer, and is that spread statewide and then redistributed?
I, I'll have to, I'll have to count on my finance manager. This, this deals with healthcare billing system, which are complex issues, but in general, this program enables us to take advantage of some federal reimbursement dollars that have to flow through the state.
Okay.
And, and there's sort of a match, you have to put up a match in order to be qualified to get those flow-through dollars. But with that introduction, maybe, Jody, you can give a little bit more of a detailed explanation.
Sure. This program is eligible to public ambulance transportation systems, and most throughout the state do participate. We transfer approximately 1.6 million, and then we get, we generate about 4.7, I believe. And, and that's compensating for Medicaid, the Medicaid reimbursement is extremely low at $190 per transport, well below our costs, so this program provides revenue for those uncompensated costs for Medicaid transports.
Okay. Thank you. That explains that. And then on the, I know, I believe legislation did not pass, or it was changed on the public amplification, the building amplifier issue?
I believe you're referring to the, the bidirectional amplifier to amplify the radio signal associated with public safety. Yes, the legislation had changed, not significantly, but the changes delayed the implementation for up to five years, and it redefined the, the building type, the building type, the high-rise. And so that has not gone away as much as it's been delayed in terms of its implementation. The program requires building owners that have buildings that don't propagate an emergency service signal within the building, and it's a functional task. You've got to be in the building in certain spots and key the radio, and the radio has to hit the, hit the radio system and, and create a signal. If, if your building does not do that, then you're required to put an amplification system. For instance, the public safety complex that, where my office is, has such a BDA amplifier in it. Mostly it relates to high-rise buildings. Our radio system was designed around a standard signal standard, which it currently meets. And that signal standard is generally different for residential, it's different yet again for urban, high-density areas, and, but when the system was designed and the radio towers were placed, and it, it's tested annually, and it still meets those requirements as today.
So are we still having to plan for a large capital investment in the future, based on?
Well, I would probably have to defer to administrative services in terms, because that's a function of buildings, and how many buildings does the county own that would, that would need such an amplification system? As, as time goes on, the cost of the amplification systems will likely change, as does the technology, and, and many of those amplification systems can amplify not only the radio signal, but the cellular phone signal as well. And so I, I don't have a cost estimate, but I suspect we, as a county, do own some buildings that likely would need some amplification, but I don't have that number right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you have any numbers as it relates to the patients that we may have had to transport due to COVID who did not have insurance? I'm asking because I know that there was a concern about patients who were diagnosed with COVID being transported to the hospital, not having medical insurance, and how that was going to be covered. And so I'm wondering if we transported any patients by which we didn't receive any revenue, if we would be entitled to see about the county being reimbursed for those dollars just like medical services were reimbursed by the federal government for the patient's stay?
I, I can get you those numbers. We do track that, and we did anticipate that, but I just don't have those numbers with me here today.
Okay. Just a way to, you know, when you were talking about.
I, I think Sessler can give you some general numbers in terms of that.
I don't have specific numbers, however, part of the terms and conditions to receive CARES money as a EMS provider was agreeing not to bill uninsured patients with COVID-positive diagnosis. So we received, I believe, $2.6 million, the EMS fund, out of CARES money.
Okay.
So that money is to go toward lost revenue, and also we, there's an uninsured portal that we submit claims to, and we get reimbursed at the Medicare rate for those claims. So no patients with, no insurance will get a bill with a COVID diagnosis.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Anything else on your end, or?
No, that completes my report.
Done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim. So we'll, we'll keep going. I know Jeffrey's on his way. He was in a training session, so if we can, we'll go to emergency management. And Kathy Perkins.
Actually, Barry, if we could go to animal services, because our analyst for emergency management is currently en route.
Oh, okay. Up next, then, is animal services. So we have Doug and Charlie Jenkins. Turn it over to Charlie to kick us off.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Charlie Jenkins, and I am the Budget and Financial Management Analyst for Animal Services. Joining me this morning is Belinda Amundson, Strategic and Performance Management Analyst for Animal Services, and Doug Brightwell, the Director of Animal Services. I will be facilitating this meeting with additional support from Belinda and Doug. I will cover the department's budget and performance highlights via the document titled FY22 BIS PCAS Analysis, and that's located in the Greenwich File 21-851A, Attachment 1. The department purpose is on page one. So Pinellas County Animal Services is the largest open-admission shelter for dogs and cats in Pinellas County, and is responsible for ensuring animal-related health, welfare, and safety for the citizens and animals of Pinellas County. Services include pet adoption, spay and neuter grant programs, microchipping, found pet reunification services, rabies control, animal bite investigations, dangerous dog investigations, pet licensing, kennel permitting, pet dealer permitting, hobby breeder permitting, code enforcement, and cruelty investigations. Departmental staffing is remaining flat, and no additional positions have been added for FY22. However, volunteer services, which Animal Services has heavily relied on to avoid requesting additional personnel, is continuing a downward trend in comparison to calendar year 19 and calendar year 20 volunteer hours. For calendar year 21, volunteer hours currently stand at 11,211, which is a 57.6% decrease. And that's in comparison to calendar year 20. As of June 2021, there are two vacancies within the department. One change I do, I would like to note is that a part-time certified veterinary tech position was upgraded to a full-time position, and to offset this upgrade, a part-time admin support specialist was removed. The budget summary is on page two. Animal services consist of two funds, which is the General Fund and the Gifts for Animal Welfare Trust Fund, and three budget programs, which is the Animal Shelter, Field Enforcement, and Veterinary Services. The General Fund is a primary funding source for the department, and the Animal Welfare Trust Fund was established for the receipt of gifts, grants, and awards of money from either public or private donors for the exclusive use, welfare, and benefit of domestic animals within Pinellas County. General Fund revenues decreased by 4.08% for FY22, and that's due to lower anticipated shelter fees for animal adoptions, reclaims, and charges for services. Yeah, and basically, a minimal decrease in rabies licensing fees. As a result of COVID-19, the department experienced reduced animal intake as the demand for pets increased. Adoption rates remain consistent, and the average length of stay for shelter animals decreased. Despite the decrease in rabies licensing fees, 39% of the pet population is now licensed, which is one of the highest rates in the state. The department has exceeded its target of 30% and has set a new goal to reach 41% in The Gifts for Animal Welfare Trust Fund revenues decreased by 29.41% for FY22, and that's due to a decrease in donations from citizens and community partners, as 50% of the pet stores shifted to a rescue-based model for cat adoptions, and they no longer participate in the Animal Services pet store program. The General Fund operating budget increased by 0.32% for FY22, and that's driven by salary and wage inflation and career path salary adjustments. This increase is offset by a reduction in capital outlay for four vehicles that were purchased in FY20 but delivered in FY21. And then there's also operating expenses that do feed into, or that do offset that increase, and that's primarily driven by a reduction in risk allocation for injuries and vehicle-related incidents, and then medical supplies. and vehicle-related incidents and then medical supplies. Excluding reserves, the Gifts for Animal Welfare Trust Fund operating budget increased by 57.72% for FY22 and that's primarily driven by annual community grants program for local animal shelters and clinics, which was reduced in FY21 to address facility needs in the kennel area. And that's also due to salary and wage inflation for a grant worker position. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been permanent shifts in operations with Animal Services. Staff will no longer pick up stray cats in the field outside of emergencies. Citizens now bear this responsibility. Also, the weekly vaccine clinic that, clinic that once took place inside the shelter is now a mobile drive-up clinic, which allows staff to vaccinate animals quicker and citizens do not have to exit their vehicles. Departmental cost savings associated with these shifts in operations are staff labor Decision packages, which is on page four, Animal Services is proposing one for FY22. The Community Cats Sterilization Voucher will fund Meow Now and other nonprofit organizations or individuals for the specific purpose of having community cats in Pinellas County sterilized, rabies vaccinated, and ear tipped. The budgetary impact of this decision package is $50,000 for FY22. As for potential threats, Senate Bill 60, which prohibits code inspectors and code enforcement officers from initiating investigations of potential violations in codes and ordinances by way of anonymous complaints, was later amended to allow anonymous complaints if there is a threat of imminent destruction of natural resources or to health, welfare, and safety. This bill has since passed the Florida 2021 legislative session and is currently awaiting Governor DeSantis's signature. This bill could negatively affect Animal Services due to the decreasing number of complaints for animal cruelty and neglect from citizens who would no longer be anonymous and fear retaliation. And at this time, I would like to hand it over to Doug Brightwell to discuss any additional highlights or priorities for the department.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm joined by Jennifer Renner, our Program Manager for Community Outreach. First, I wanted to thank all of our staff because we worked throughout the pandemic without being able to work from home. We had to implement some social distancing and process changes to be able to continue provide services onsite throughout the pandemic and our staff stepped up and did a really wonderful job with that throughout the crisis. Just wanted to make a note on our animal licensing. We have recovered from the pandemic decrease in licensing, which was because of the vet clinics and services being shut down for a period of time. We have now recovered to our pre-pandemic levels and we've reached a new high for licensing of almost 206,000 animals, which is the most we've ever licensed in Pinellas County. Back in January, we implemented a new organizational structure to increase efficiencies and improve some of the programs and create more positive impacts for our animals and our communities. One of the changes we did was create an animal health division with an outcome team. That team and division is headed by Dr. Asher and Casey Miller. They've done a tremendous job of providing new enrichment programs for our dogs and cats, improving the live outcomes for a lot of our dogs that needed some socialization and some minor rehabilitation behaviorally, and supporting the pilot program with Friends of Strays, which is Pinellas Cats Alive. We also created the Community Outreach Team, which Jennifer is the manager for, and it includes our volunteer services. And volunteer services hours have dropped because of a couple of reasons. The main reason this year has been the pandemic. We were running out of animals on a fairly regular basis and without animals, we didn't need volunteers in the building. So that was one of the few positives from the pandemic that we enjoyed for almost a year. Unfortunately, we are now trending back toward pre-pandemic animal intake levels. And we also reduced when the volunteers could come back. We kept their numbers reduced because we were still masking and social distancing in order to protect staff and volunteers from any adverse impacts from that. We are now ramping volunteer services back up to the levels pre-pandemic, along with the dog and cat populations that are going up. The other main point of the Community Outreach Team is they are collaborating with our enforcement division to target some of those cases in our community that are just chronic, hard-to-resolve offenders. We could do short-term things, but we didn't have the effort or the resources to go and work with them to find long-term results. We've now, in six months, we've resolved six cases. Some of these cases chronically have been going on for several years. And we've got staff going out and working with people and teaching them how to be better pet owners, how to provide shelter, repairing their fencing, fixing their yard, so that we resolve these issues long-term and we don't have to have a high recidivism rate for some of those folks. And the community response has been really tremendous for Jennifer and her team for that, for that effort. So we appreciate that, that effort. Pinellas Cats Alive Pilot Program is, is on track for predictions in the six months. It has lowered our euthanasia rate tremendously at Animal Services for cats. It has lowered our intake for cats because a lot of those feral cats are now not even coming into our system. They're being diverted to Friends of Strays. And our live release rate for both dogs and cats is increasing because of the additional time that staff has to work with those marginal animals. We do have the decision package for this year that is in support of that pilot program as well. It's just another piece in the puzzle, which is a huge community effort among all of the nonprofits on the cat efforts. And we are on track with our building CIP remodel program. We're in the initial phases, but that initial phase of work and investigatory demolition has started so that we're on track for the, for the air conditioning later this year. And that's all I have as far as updates.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Gerard.
Well, one question, the Community Cats Sterilization Voucher, does that mean you pay per? What is that voucher?
We have providers throughout the county who, we have a negotiated rate to provide the sterilization, vaccination, and ear tipping. And it's right now, depending on the provider, between $25 and $35 a cat. So it averages out to $30 a cat. And with that decision package, we can do surgery on an additional 1,400 cats per year.
So they'll just bill you per?
They, they bill for the service after the fact.
Okay. And I know this is a minefield, to say the least, but I've been hearing a lot about puppy shops and actually driving around just seeing puppy shops pop up all of a sudden from, that I hadn't seen before. And I know that a lot of those shops, maybe all of them, I don't know. I know that we have for local breeders or we have a certification process, but they're importing from other states and bringing all these puppies in and do we have any control at all over what they're doing?
We do permit and inspect all of the pet dealers.
The shops?
The shops. There's, there's five in the county. There's, there's been four historically and we now have a fifth one. To my knowledge right now, there isn't any plans for anymore, but we acquired an additional one when Hillsborough banned them in their county. We don't have any control on the import of animals. That's a state regulation. We are not allowed to control interstate commerce, but once the animals come into the county, we inspect them. They have to have the health certificates of the veterinarian who inspected the animal before they got here. They all have the animals inspected again once they come into the county. And the five shops that we have here are very well-versed in both our county regulations and the state statute on their requirements if a puppy is sick or have, has issues and dies. And all five of the stores here in the county do adhere to the county ordinances and the state regulations.
And are all five of those on Olmerton Road? Because I swear I've seen...
They are all five on Olmerton Road. There are three within the city of Largo and two in unincorporated Largo.
And I know they're thinking about, or have talked about and maybe rejected the idea, as we did, of not allowing puppy shops.
There, there's a lot of debate and a lot of emotion and passion on both sides of that argument.
Believe me, I know.
There's still a lot of legal challenges. Hillsborough has just passed theirs and there are a number of legal challenges to their ordinance. So my recommendation is to wait and let that run its course because we don't know how this is going to end up and we, I think we should wait and see what the final outcome is before we wade into it. Because the five shops we have, we're not inundated like Hillsborough. Hillsborough had a large number of shops. And there's also some constitutional issues. I'm talking with our county attorney about regulating existing business out of business. I think there's some, that's part of what is being determined as well as the legality of regulating a business out of business, which is not within my field of expertise at all.
Right.
So we do the best we can to resolve any issues with the pet stores and help citizens if they call us to navigate that system to get those issues resolved.
Well, maybe we should think about banning future ones. You know, if Hillsborough's banning them, you know where they're coming next.
The one, the one thing that I will say we all need to keep in mind is banning the stores, the stores are not the root of the problem. The puppy mills in the other states are the root of the problem and that's what needs to be addressed because the stores are not breeding the puppies with problems. They're just providing to the market.
They're just selling the product.
And if you get rid of the, the avenue for people to acquire those puppies, they can order them now online, have them delivered by FedEx and UPS. So the puppies still end up here and you still have the problems, but then you don't have, it's more difficult to enforce than when the retailer isn't in the state or in the county, in your jurisdiction.
Right.
In your jurisdiction. It's very complicated and there's not a clear answer to it.
No, I know there's not an easy answer. Okay.
Commissioner Seale?
Amazing job and thank you to you and your staff for all the services. I'm glad you are going to do the voucher. I think that's a fair way of allowing our not-for-profits to be reimbursed, so.
And just so you know, the $50,000 where that came from is, that's Doug's estimation of the capacity that's even out there to provide that service. So if we gave him $100,000, it's probably not the capacity within the clinics to be able to provide that.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And that, that was what you just hit was what I was going to ask because we did have a nonprofit ask for a little over twice what, what we've budgeted and I was going to give Doug the chance to talk about that, so, but I appreciate you, you covering that because that's, I think we're all sharing that same end goal. And then I just wanted to compliment Doug and the team. When I first came on the commission, I think we went through three directors in, in three months and had a lot of upheaval out there and then Mo kind of did triage. But when I was touring out there just a couple of weeks ago, the atmosphere was palpable of how well-run it is and how, the difference of a few years ago to today. So I just wanted to thank you for the good work and, and to, a testament to my restraint, there was a bass hound there that I did not take home, so my personal growth as well.
Commissioner, he left the next day, so he is okay.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Justice. And I echo those, those sentiments about your organization and how things are going. So thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll move to the Office of Human Rights and Jeffrey Lorick coming up. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Do I need to state my name for the record or are we okay?
Go ahead.
All right. My name is Jeffrey Lorick. I am the director, new director of the Pinellas County Office of Human Rights where I serve. And our purpose today is to go over our, our budget or, in a, in a high level, at a high level, is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. For those who may not know, the Pinellas County Office of New Rights provides protections against violations of discrimination law in public accommodation, housing, employment. We also run a wage-staff recovery program through our office that recovers lost wages for employees in the county who were not paid properly. We also take public accommodation complaints for those who try to enter theaters or restaurants and don't have access because of their disability of some reason. We also enforce that. We also, our staff of 10, right now we're two down, but we're planning, are in the process of hiring two more additional staff people with some retirements and employees leaving for other places. In terms of our budget, it is consistent with where we've been for the last five or six years. We're showing a slight variance, particularly in our work share agreements with EEOC and HUD. And we believe those variances are directly related to this kind of COVID environment. It's kind of affected everybody. Our employment cases are way, way down for investigation and we get paid to do investigation services. So we get paid for our intakes, we get paid for those that go to full investigations, for those who, that are settled through conciliation and mediation, they pay us accordingly. We normally have an EEOC contract to do 115 employment cases. We are looking to downwardly modify that to about 85 cases and that'd have a direct budget impact for us. We typically budget at a rate of like $83,000 and we're going to budget at $80,000 for this upcoming year. And so that's a variance of a little bit over 3%. In our housing program, kind of the same thing. We believe it's being affected by COVID as well. We're showing a slight variance there of 5%. We normally budget $200,000 and we're reducing it. So that will affect our total revenue in a negative 4.25. And our personal expenses and operating expenses are just seeing a marginal increase of about a little over 3%. And that's directly related to personnel expenses. Where there is a slight increase in our budget, which is really a good thing for the county, in our at-home environment, our work-from-home environment, we instituted a language line for all interpretation services, which were mandated, mandated by federal law, LEP program. And those numbers have gone up drastically as our employees have worked from home. So we made an adjustment in our budget to address that increase in the upcoming year. It's really, it's a good thing because now maybe our employees see how efficient it is and how effective it is at working. So when they return to work, we anticipate that they'll continue to use the service, which is why we have it in place. And we have upwardly modified the contract of our state-certified mediator who does all mediations and conciliations in our office, does a great job. We conciliate most of our cases at a rate little over 60%, which saves us and the county a great deal of expense for those cases going to full trials and being heard in court and paying legal fees. But we're trying to mitigate that. We are having two staff people who have just completed mediation training so that they can receive their certification and that will help us reduce some increase in our mediation and conciliation services. So at that, I'll ask for any questions, if anybody has any.
Any questions? Any questions for Jeffrey? Okay. Go ahead. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. No questions. All right. Good. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you all so much.
And Bill, are we ready? Yes? All right. Last up today for the Department Budget Information Sessions is Department of Emergency Management. And with us, we have Kathy Perkins and our OMB analyst, Kimberly Williams. And she's one of our newer analysts here since, what? No? No, she's not here. So you're going to take over?
I'm going to do my best.
Okay. So we got to fill in since she's not here today. So Frederica will help us with this.
Yes. So, good afternoon. My name is Frederica Collins and I'm one of the budget managers, operating budget managers in OMB. Here with me today, we have Belinda Amundson. Also, she's the Strategic Performance Management Analyst in OMB. You've seen her quite a few times today. We also have Kathy Perkins, the Department Director, and Betsy Farley, the Administrative Support and Finance in Emergency Management. So, as you know, the department's purpose is to provide effective preparation and planning for coordination of emergency operations during times of disasters, both natural, accidental, and man-made. Their main function is to make sure that they're engaging and empowering with our community partners. Over the last two years, Emergency Management has taken on a whole community approach, which has involved them engaging more on the front end to just make sure that the county is able to respond during times of hurricanes and other unplanned events. For over a year, Emergency Management's operational priorities have been shifted to lead county response efforts with the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result, some of their day-to-day operational activities were postponed or put on hold just so they could focus their attentions on responding to our countywide response for COVID-19. So despite the challenges faced because of the public health crisis, some, several of their operational efficiencies in areas for improvement have been realized. For example, Emergency Management has focused on the reassessment and redesign of emergency management plans is underway. Mobilization and logistics coordination are more streamlined because as a result of COVID-19, even though it set them back on some of their day-to-day operational activities, the department was able to implement some things that they had in the pipeline, better streamline some of their warehouse operations and the way they coordinate their logistics operations for that and just other reporting functions in the WebEOC software. So moving along to the staffing summary on page one. So Emergency Management has maintained consistent 15.5 FTE for the department over the last several years. Moving along to the budget summary on page one. Emergency Management's FY21 operational activities, as I mentioned earlier, were suspended. But as a result, the projection of the upcoming fiscal year is to realign some of the resources and activities that they weren't able to complete for the FY22 budget. So I am going to shift down to the revenues. So Emergency Management's revenues have maintained, remain consistent over the last few years. For their intergovernmental revenues, the department received several grants, federal pass-through grants from the state of Florida, just to help with some of their planning activities for training. And it really just offsets a lot of their, their staff. I believe it offsets about 75% of their, well, their personnel budget makes up 75% and their grants actually support about 25% of their budget. Their other revenue source is charges for services. So one of Emergency Management's functions is to provide healthcare plan reviews, to look at the healthcare plans for our ALFs, hospitals, nursing homes in the area, just to make sure that they're able to accurately respond, you know, during a disaster and that we're keeping our citizens safe, our vulnerable population safe. So overall, the total operating revenues are projected to increase $9,000 or 2.4% more than the total FY21 adopted budget. And like I said, grants are directly responsible for, you know, just making sure that we're able to augment our services. I'm going to shift down to the expenditure summary now. So as you can see, the overall department's budget will be shifting from FY21 to FY22 by $120,000 or 6%. This is primarily due to some one-time planned expenditures that occurred in the FY21 year. The department was making sure that they were increasing their operational readiness in the EOC. So they focused on, you know, enhancing some of the technologies in FY21. And since that was a one-time expense, they will not need to do that for FY22.
Frederica, hold on one second. I had a question. On, back to the nursing home resiliency, I guess, issues that we've had over the years, especially when we had the storms come through and air conditioning problems and that kind of thing. It seemed to me, if I remember correctly, there was an effort being made to at least try to understand the status of, you know, shortfall. So I'm just wondering how we're doing as far as getting our nursing homes properly equipped for issues that arise from air conditioning problems or outages?
Yeah, Commissioner, so there was a Florida statute that was put out after Hurricane Irma requiring that every single facility have an emergency power plan. That is part of what is submitted to our office for review so we can make sure that each of our facilities have addressed that. This is also inspected by the local fire districts to ensure that all the hookups and everything are there and they actually get a letter from them saying that they do have everything in place.
So, so how are, how are we doing overall? Do we know? Do we have a feeling about that? We have a lot of those facilities, so.
I, I'd have to check and see if there's any deficiencies. As far as I know, every facility has a written plan and has that in place, but I will go back and check to see if there are any deficiencies.
So a written plan, does that include like generators and that kind of thing for issues with power outages and?
So for some, they may actually have a generator in sight. Some may already have it pre-wired to be able to install a generator and have a contract with someone for a generator. I can get additional information on that if you want to break down.
I'd like to have a feel for that, that'd be great. Thank you. Excuse me, Frederica, go ahead.
No problem at all there. So I will be shifting down to the bottom of page two, just to go over some of the expenditure changes impacting Personnel Services. So Personnel Services reflects an increase of $46,000 or 3.1%. And that's mostly attributed to inflationary increases, just standard general increase and other changes for the department. Let's see here. Sorry. Shifting to the operating expenditures, the FY22 proposed budget request for operating reflects a net decrease of $152,570 or 31.8% from the FY21 adopted budget, just due to the following. And as I mentioned earlier, it's mostly attributed to Emergency Management focusing on EOC readiness and enhancing the technology for the EOC. And the purpose of that was just to ensure continuity of planning operations since Emergency Management has contracted with the transportation service to conduct some of their logistics routing analysis for the evacuation of the most vulnerable citizens of the county. In addition, Emergency Management will continue to enhance their publications to ensure compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, by utilizing translation services for published videos and publications. So that's one of the things that Emergency Management has been focused on as well the last few years, is just ensuring that we're able to get out information to all populations to make sure that everyone is focused on their, their personal hurricane response plans and that we're putting that information out in terms of regarding evacuation routes and just emergency planning. For capital outlay, the FY22 proposed budget reflects a decrease of $13,900 or 32.3% less than the FY21 adopted budget due to the following planned purchases this year. So some of the purchases were, again, FY21, Emergency Management. As part of the EOC readiness, they did some BTS device refresh projects by purchasing some of the thin clients or replacing the thin clients in the EOC. And then also some of their wall monitors to make sure that when the EOC is fully activated, we're able to get information out to all of the emergency support functions as quickly as possible throughout the EOC and all of the breakout rooms. So with that, Emergency Management also has been focused on ensuring that Emergency Management, the EOC when activated, has all of the capabilities and functions. After Hurricane Irma, the 2017 disaster event, there were some items that came up during the after-action report where EOC staff, you know, reported that they wanted to have additional monitors in the EOC. They needed more breakout space to have those private meetings to make sure that they're able to coordinate and function properly. So Emergency Management has been focused on that as well, just to make sure that we're able to collaborate as effectively as possible during any EOC activations. I'm going to pass it over to Belinda to see if she has anything additional you'd like to?
Actually, I'm going to pass it over to Kathy, who has a number of statements regarding a bunch of the things that they've been doing this year.
Okay, I just really want to say, Frederica, thank you for pinch hitting, first of all, great job. And then I just had a question regarding schools versus community center usage for, I guess, for our special needs shelters. One of the issues that we had, we've had is that when those special needs shelters continue to operate after the storm has passed and schools can't get back in session, so we have delays doing that. I thought there had been some discussion about getting some movement towards community centers for those. And so, again, I'm not, I'm not pushing one way or another here, just to let everybody know, but one of the issues that we talked about is, is our new community center issues, like down in the South County, North County, and Mid County, community centers stepping up and serving that need. I just haven't heard a lot about that and just your thoughts on that. And maybe it's a Barry question, I'm not sure, but.
Well, I'll let Kathy start and then I'll kind of pitch in here.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a challenge. I will say, so we do have Ross Norton in Clearwater that does have a backup generator that we can use for special needs. We installed the generator at Lealman in exchange, making sure I'm naming the right one. We did install a generator there, so that way if we did need to move special needs folks there and we had power interruptions, so we can put them there. Largo has stood up. They're actually going to help us shelter one of our, staff one of our shelters and they have a community center that we're going to use. We have been making appeals and Barry has been talking with city managers as well, but it is a challenge to get that commitment and ensure that we have all those resources in place. We're continuing to work with schools on mitigation for those sites. We actually have at John Hopkins trying to expand the capacity, at least for the risk sheltering, but we do continue to try to address how we can do that step-down sheltering. You know, we worked very successfully with real estate management through COVID to identify sites that could be used for vaccination and for testing. So part of our plan is, you know, we'll work with real estate real time if, if we don't have something available elsewise or something has been destroyed, to try to identify maybe even like a vacant box store or any other type of facility that may be appropriate. We have additional generators that we received from the state last year. So that's what we spend a lot of our time doing, is trying to pre-planning, identify locations and then work on if, if we are going to use that location, how do we have the backup power, how do we have the resources to support it?
And it is complicated. I mean, a lot of those sites would be after the fact, but if you don't want to have all these moves going on, we need to be able to put them in a place that has some degree of like at least CAT 2, CAT 3 sustainability. So, so again, we're trying to minimize that, trying to get schools back in session quicker. So, I mean, I know it's not a simple, easy, quick solution, but I think it's something we need to really be focusing on.
We are, we are focused on that. Unfortunately, you know, this year, they've, they've had a number of tasks to complete and that's really a relationship issue of meeting, you know, with each city and, and working through the, some of the issues and challenges and creating, and creating those agreements. So we're going to continue to work on that. I've pitched that a couple of times with Kathy to our city managers. We've really talked about that need, you know, and I give them credit because they were really looking at how do we do modeling differently? Because as we saw, you know, a year and a half ago, almost two years ago, we had a different type of storm where we were going to have a storm surge. How do we plan differently and not impact the schools as much? And so, you know, they've looked at that. Now, now it's an issue of execution and time. And so they're going to have to pick off those one by one. And of course, we're looking at, with the penny for Pinellas up in North County, as that comes online, then that would be a hardened shelter, so it'd give us additional capacity.
Any, any, I know early on, last year, I guess, especially with the COVID, there was a plan for more space per person. I think it went from like 15 square feet to 60, I think, or something like that. So it's four times the space. Are you seeing that model still in place for this year or is it downsizing a little bit on that?
So we do have that as a possibility, that we may need to go that way because not everybody's been vaccinated yet. Not, you know, we still have people under the age of 12 that cannot get vaccinations. So, you know, there could be family units coming in. We may have immunosuppressed people that maybe if they got the vaccination, aren't seeing the full effect of that. So we are planning for that. We're planning for social distancing, the masks, the extra cleaning. You know, if we see we're in a better place when we activate, if we have to activate, you know, we may be able to scale that back some.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I know you had some things you wanted to get into.
Yeah, Commissioner, I was just going to say, I was remiss in mentioning that we actually did get a grant from the state of Florida to do an engineering assessment of the Palm Harbor CSA, to look at that as a potential shelter and what could be, what hardening would be needed. And again, that would be another site that we would look if we could install a generator and have that be for special needs clients as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead.
So I do want to thank Frederica. Frederica was our, my budget analyst when I first got here. She really is a part of the EM team. And, and I've got Betsy Farley with me, who's an Admin Finance Program Lead. And if you ever want to know the devil in the details and all the work that gets done, you work with your admin finance folks and, and the OMB folks, you know, all the work that Frederica does. Now I say we're in the Paper Palooza phase of COVID because now it's all about reconciling all the documents, ensuring that we compile everything and have it in a logical way. So 10, 20, 50 years from now, if audits occur, the people that are working in Emergency Management will know how to find those documents. The amount of work that, that Betsy did, working on POs, there were departments and groups that I'd never heard of within OMB and procurement, you know, working with the clerk's office. And I think that's kind of been interesting for me as I've been listening to the Budget Information Sessions, is even though Emergency Management is a small office of 16 people, it's not just us. I mean, it really is everybody in this room, every department, everybody, all the appointing authorities that come together to help with disasters. I also have Joe Borries here with me and, you know, Joe, he's been around for, for quite a while in Emergency Management. He's my operations manager. And as you can imagine, we still had to deal with hurricanes and other events. So we basically kind of split our office in half at one point. So half of us could focus on COVID and the other half could really try to continue with the business as usual for all of the hurricane preparedness measures that we do. You heard Frederica talk about, you know, some of the numbers and, you know, really only about 4% of our budget is, is about communications, rentals, leases, repairs, maintenance, and primarily that's about keeping that emergency operations center ready in case we have to activate it. I don't know, I don't think you had the opportunity, but during Tropical Storm ETA, we actually did some work. We created a little command room in our EOC and it was great because when Barry and the sheriff came in, we could come in and we could, you know, have on the screen all the different pictures, what was happening with the storm, be able to show that and have those discussions about what were the measures that we may have to take. Last year, we were fortunate to get an additional $49,000 from the state for COVID monies and we use this to really help supplement equipment at our warehouse operations. You heard Frederica talk a little bit about logistics and how that was something we wanted to focus on. Our folks have gone from probably a small logistical group to really just incredible to the, the amount of things, how many warehouses they set up, the community staging area, the amount of PPE they have moved from point A to point B. We had staff that were personally delivering, delivering items to nursing homes and assisted living facilities on their way home. You know, talk about dedication. I had staff that were out there cleaning bathrooms at testing and vaccine sites. I had staff that were so worried about our, our vulnerable folks that get dialysis that they ensured that we had a transportation contract set up in place to help provide that service. And we, I think we were the only county that we heard of in the state that was doing that because a lot of the regular service providers for transportation didn't have the capacity or didn't want to do it. We do anticipate being able to get some additional $13,000 in supplemental grant monies from the state for fiscal year '22. So we're just waiting for the official word on that before we can build that into our budget. And, and I just want to thank you because I feel like, you know, since I've been here, you guys have been very supportive in the decision packages that we've put forward. And this year, I don't have a decision package for you, but a decision package that you approved two years ago was bringing in two additional staff, one for WebEOC and our information systems and one for our whole community. And those two personnel have just really helped move mountains. Last year, you approved a decision package to help us increase our portable communications with what we call our pod runners and our SAT runners over a three-year cycle. And I can tell you, we had one of those little pod runners down at our testing sites for almost a year. This thing ran every single day and I think the only thing we had to replace was an air filter because it got dirty from all the dust out at the Tropicana site. But it was really incredible, having that ability to have communications out there. You know, it helped us be able to relay real-time information to the state for testing data, which was one of their requirements, making sure that we could compile daily reports and also for the incident commander to keep an eye on, on the weather. We actually went from, you know, we were looking for fans to keep people cool, to heaters to keep people warm, to fans again. We would have severe storms that would roll in and we would have to shut down operations for the safety of the people there. So really incredible. So thank you for, for that support. And in fact, we just met yesterday with Craig and EMS and talking with some of the fire chiefs about the wildland fire planning. And we talked about how those little pod runners may be able to assist if, heaven forbid, they had an incident up in the Booker Creek area and they needed to supplement communications up there. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about the COVID numbers. You're going to have a presentation next week that's going to give you a lot of those highlights. But I do want to talk about some of the things that as we've gone back and looked at the numbers have, have kind of, I guess, kind of even surprised me because I think we've just been in the thick of it for 16 months. We've forgotten even the things we were doing in the early days. The EOC was activated for 463 days. EM staff was responsible for. EM staff was responsible for collating and sending 298 daily reports to the state. And we had a time deadline, right? So as soon as our testing and our vaccines sites finished, we had to make sure that we had all that information complied, set up to the state, put in their database, put in our database, so that way we could always have fresh numbers and knew where we were. There were 24,884 Web EOC records for COVID. So we have that Web EOC database that allows us to maintain that situational awareness. So all the work that was being done by the many entities, this is the format that we use to be able to track all that information. So imagine the Paper Palooza, right? We're going through this now and making sure that we can reconcile all of our records, make sure we can support any of the documentation that may be needed for the financial reimbursement that is being sought. We developed 150 reports and action plans. This included planning documents that were repaired each week for each of our testing and vaccine sites that had site-specific layouts, staffing, contact numbers, safety information, traffic plans, and weekly weather forecasts. We ensured that we had hydration, cooling, rest areas for staff that work long hours on their feet, and we also had to have a plan for how we would, we did a whole mobilization plan for everything that was needed, the soup to nuts, to get these sites up and running. We also had the demobilization plan for how do you tear all that down, that coordination. And then we also had to come up with hurricane plans because during all of our operations as storms threatened us, we needed to be able to tear those sites down and then put them back up within a day or two's notice. We detailed everything from the cones, the digital traffic signs, the signage, the vests, the cones, the tents, the porta-potties, the PPE, the personnel to fill each site, who was refueling the generators, the security, and the list goes on. And I tell you this because this, I think, is a big part of the metrics and the numbers and the story behind emergency management that is not often reflected in some of the bigger numbers that you hear. It was interesting because the other day I was talking to a group and I said, if we've really done our job well, we have nothing to show for it. Well, okay, so we have piles of paper, we have statistics, right? You know, we have lots of documents, but really, the lines of the people queuing up for water and vaccines diminish, the calls for help taper off, and the boxes of food have all been given out. So at the end of the day, we know we've done a good job when we leave the community in as good a shape as it can be after a disaster. And I know for those of you that may be a little older like me, but remember that 3M commercial, "We don't make the disaster, we make it better." So that's really what we're all about. We're rarely the people who are out in front. We're often behind the scenes, working on usually more considerations than ever get lost. You know, I like to think we're the throw the spaghetti at the wall people to see what sticks. There were over 80 sites that were assessed during COVID for field hospitals, testing, vaccinations. And for COVID, our EM staff was out there actually running these sites. Normally, that wouldn't be something we're doing, but they were just, the staff was incredible. They were running the warehouses and supporting all the vaccination sites. We utilized data that we had gathered from our mobile home initiatives over the last few years. If you remember, we've done those door hangers and gone out to mobile home parks. We utilized that data to help us reach out to the larger 55-plus communities to bring vaccination clinics to them. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that we do that really helps support us when we get into an activation. You know, we joke that the EM stands for endless meetings, and we do a lot of that. So during COVID, there were 1,641 coordination calls. And I know Belinda was very active in our planning section, you know, all of those working groups, all of those calls. And it's not just about people just talking. Out of that blossoms and blooms all of the work that was done. I mean, even the working groups, I remember early on, I had a call, I think with Daisy and Lourdes, and I think Barbara may even have been on it, and we talked about what did we think COVID, how was it going to impact the community? Who do we need to bring to the table? And we kind of spitballed, hey, we think these are the groups. And then, you know, we reached out to the champions for these different agencies, and they ran with it. I mean, it blossomed. So all of those calls had meaning. All of those calls resulted in actionable measures. And really, what emergency management does, and it's really hard to measure, is we build the trust. We build the networks. We build that coordination because we need to be able to know, who do we call to bring together the pieces of the puzzle? It is about working on the front end with planning, zoning, and ordinance and mitigation, trying to make lasting changes that will reduce the impacts of disasters. And Joe worked really hard this year. He worked with the tides, and he's been evaluating these density changes and proposals that come in because we want to be able to say, you know, it's more than just putting X number of people in these locations. These can be high-hazard locations, and how does that impact our evacuation clearance times? How does that impact our shelter demand? So we really tried to look at all this. We actually did a data analysis, and we saw that there's fewer people living year-round in our Zone A now, and it could be maybe there's more rental properties there. They're moving further inland. And it was interesting when I listened to Mike Twitty's presentation, and he was talking about the percentage of people that are coming in from out of state, and immediately in my mind, I was like, oh, here's a bunch of new people that now we need to educate on hurricanes. And then I thought, oh, are these going to be rental properties? Are they going to be year-round properties? You know, so this is where the beauty of emergency management is, is making those linkages. We work with our partners that serve the community year-round and find ways to build upon their capacities. You heard me say, last year before COVID, we were working with the over 120 feeding providers, and we saw that during COVID, there was a tremendous need. We turned to Human Services to really help us, hey, let's get all these folks to the table and talk about how we can leverage all of the work that's being done. Part of what we're doing right now is we're working on trying to create a Pinellas Voluntary Organizations Active in Disaster, or a VOAD. We had 48 people attend the meeting, and what was fascinating is during the meeting, Kevin from Salvation Army and Jessica from Human Services were helping to facilitate it, and Mary from my office, and they asked people that were interested to be leaders in the VOAD and help us set this up. They asked people to come up to the front of the room. Half of the room came up to the front. We had about 20 people in the front of the room who wanted to be in a leadership role to help us continue with the work that we've been doing. And that is a huge challenge because during a disaster, it is easier to find people that want to help you, but the further away you get from the disaster, it's hard to keep them engaged, hard to keep them enrolled, and that's a lot of what we do in our meetings. We look, we spend a lot of time on looking at how we can improve, what worked and what didn't. This year has been a challenge for us to keep up with the after-action reports because I feel like every time we're trying to do an after-action report for one event, there's another. Just to give you an idea, we supported the supervisor of elections in November, and we're having ongoing conversations with them about how we can support them, especially for the larger elections and just helping to coordinate response. We monitored or responded to 15 severe weather incidents. We activated for 10 days for Tropical Storm ETA, and we had four separate tornado incidents in fiscal year '21. We sent personnel down to Manatee County to help support them with the Piney Point and logistics coordination, and we have been actively working with public works as they're monitoring Red Tide and seeing how that's unfolding. We are currently getting out PPE to many of the municipalities to help support with their cleanup efforts, and also we've had constituents asking for masks, yes, people want masks again, for respiratory irritation. And we are actively monitoring the tropics. I keep trying to see if the storm out there has turned into a tropical storm yet. We don't think it's going to impact us, but we will monitor it and let you know. Almost 50% of our staff time from March to March was dedicated to responding to events. 50%. That was not in our work plan. We didn't envision that. We never want to envision that, but this has really been unprecedented. It really feels like we're working on a million different little things, and each of them does make a difference. For us, it's really about knowing that the work will never be done, the plans will always need updating, that we'll continue to offer outreach and education year after year, and keep challenging ourselves to shift the needle in community preparedness, response, recovery, and resilience. The work is really about building trust and networks and knowing how we can all work together. And I just want to thank you for your continued support with all of our efforts.
Well, yeah, amazing work. And I think you said a comment, and I can assure you that this county is better off with the work that you all did this past year, whether it was responding to the past year issues or planning for the future. It's really neat to hear from the different groups, the different departments, because you start to see how incredibly resilient our people are and how adaptive they are. The adjustments that you made along the way, I mean, were just amazing. You know, where we have bumps in the road, they were smooth sailing within a week or two. I mean, we were doing things for the first times in so many cases, and I just couldn't be prouder of really an organization and the people that we have here and how they helped our residents this past year. And to your group, we definitely feel safer having you all behind us. Maybe you're behind the scenes, but it really makes a big difference for us sitting around this table for sure, but for our residents as well. So I just really wanted to say a special thank. I know we're going to hear about the different groups next week a little bit, and I'm really excited and looking forward to that. And also that after the, you know, more meetings and reports, but just kind of looking back at the past year and seeing, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, how do we improve going forward? And I think that obviously, when you look back and see the things that we've done good, maybe where we need to improve, that kind of after-action report will be great to see at some point, but great work.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's funny, when I would go to my staff and I'd be like, oh, can you remind me about this? And they're like, oh, I forgot about that. Forgot we were doing that back last April.
Yeah, amazing, amazing. Any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Long?
Yes, well, I don't want to be repetitive, but I just found your report exhausting to listen to, just in terms of the variety and the diversity of the things that you were doing that we had never, ever had to do before. And it occurs to me that it's an incredibly inspiring story about real leadership and real, honest-to-God, public service. Because you just can never, our citizens, I don't think, have any idea of what was going on behind the scenes. And we so often focus on all the things that are wrong and all the things that people don't like, or it's one complaint after another, and we've surely had our fill of listening to it this year. But I do think there's got to be ways to get this story out and to highlight what an incredibly fabulous, fantastical place this is to live. And I think it's a great story that our legislators need to hear because they so often think that local governments don't do anything, and this is such an incredible example of boots on the ground, that what would have happened had we not been doing what we were doing? Who else was going to come to the rescue? And I don't think we spend enough time thinking about that. And I'm looking at Barbara down there, thinking that surely there's got to be a way to craft a story or even a series of stories that get published somewhere to bring it to light to our citizens who really are in the dark about all of what has been going on. So I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, but it's just an extraordinary, extraordinary example of how we are providing the best public service in America. And it's a role model, I think, that can be followed for, God forbid, we have another kind of this event, but we know eventually we will have something, right? So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So next Tuesday, we're going to, next Tuesday, we're going to kind of outline some of this, and so Barbara has documented, you know, things that, you know, as I read it, I was like, wow, I forgot about that, you know, things that we were dealing with. And so I'll outline that, and I won't duplicate it all, but I can't pass up the opportunity to say, you know, what tremendous leadership Kathy's personally brought, you know, to our emergency management group. And she does it in such a way, I mean, you know, when you get in EOC and they're working ungodly hours, you know, during those events, she brings a slap-bappy sense of humor to the job. She comes in upbeat, and it's infectious, you know? And the rest of her team follows that. So it's that leadership that she brings that really made a difference when you get into those long days. And so I just really, really, really wanted to say how fortunate we are to have her at the helm when we have these events. Bringing a sense of calm when the rest of us are like all frazzled. So, yeah, I think there are, you know, I heard from a lot of residents this year that had that contact with some part of our organization and were overwhelmed with the support that the county was giving. To Commissioner Long's point, I don't know that each one person may know the rest of the breadth and depth of what happened, and so I think this report will be great. I'm sure we'll get it online and to tell the rest of the story because there are a lot of good stories, a lot of great work that's been going on. And as you said, some of it's just kind of behind-the-scenes stuff that just gets done, you know? But that's so critically important. So anyway, I'm looking forward to that next week, and Barbara, your synopsis of kind of what, to the best of your abilities, to synopsize what all that was done this past year. So, great stuff. Any other comments, questions?
I'm hungry. I'm hungry.
Yeah, we're going to take a break right now.
I have one quick comment. So Kathy, I just want to thank you for your partnership and coordination and engagement with OMB. It has been very refreshing working with you guys because you always look beyond your main role, which is response and recovery, and think to how we should best document our efforts for cost reimbursement, which is what happens on the backend. So I really appreciate your entire team just being in that mode to always think what OMB may need to ensure the county is made as whole as possible when we respond to the event. So thank you so much for that. It has been enlightening.
Yeah, that's a big deal, too. That's a great point. Thank you for that because, yeah, we want to get back what we can get back. If you don't document, you don't do it, it doesn't happen. So that's great. Okay, well, thank you all. Appreciate your report, and we are going to take about, we'll start back at 12:30. All we have left is our agenda briefing, but I think we just grab a bite to eat, and then we'll come back and finish up.
All right, David.
Okay. All right. So we start out with our presentations and awards. Obviously, we have a couple we'll talk about, but the National Mosquito Control Awareness Week proclamation. Then we'll move down and we're going to let Judge Rondelino and Geyenski give an award to our facility staff for their response during the pandemic. And then the award from the Florida City and County Management Association, the President's Award, and we'll have MICA here to present that. That's where we're going to really kind of cover all the different impact the staff had, different agencies, and also how that was facilitated with all of our partner agencies. And so we'll kind of have a report just to highlight, you know, all the work from the past year. Moving on down, obviously, we have the Clerk of the Court items and receipt for filing, a couple of areas. The first action item is, under the consent, is a bid, item number 11, an award to Smith Industries for fencing, gate operators, handrails. That's through the Tampa Bay Area Purchasing Cooperative. It's a 60-month contract for 2.2 million. Item number 12 is receipt for filing. Item 13 is a reward of bid to Chimera, something like that, Water Solutions for ferric sulfate at the solid waste industrial pretreatment facility or wastewater treatment facility.
IRA commissioners, so we start out with our presentations and awards. Obviously, we have a couple we'll talk about, but the national mosquito control awareness week proclamation. Then we'll move down and we're going to let Judge Rondelino and Gainski give an award to our facility staff for their response during the pandemic. And then the award from the Florida City and County Management Association, the president's award, and we'll have MICA here to present that. That's where we're going to really kind of cover all the different impact the staff had, different agencies, and also how that was facilitated with all of our partner agencies. And so we'll kind of have a report just to highlight, you know, all the work from the past year. Moving on down, obviously, we have the clerk of the court items and receipt for filing, a couple of areas. The first action item is under the consent is a bid, item number 11, an award to Smith Industries for fencing, gate operators, handrails. That's through the Tampa Bay Area Purchasing Cooperative, the 60-month contract for 2.2 million. Item number 12 is receipt for filing. Item 13 is a reward of bid to Chimera, something like that, Water Solutions for Feric Sulfate at the solid waste industrial pretreatment or wastewater treatment facility, five-year contract for $1.6 million. Item number 14 is a word of a bid to Core in Maine. This is for water meter boxes, lid material and accessories. This is a cooperative purchase with the city of Pinellas Park. And then the next one is for the water meters, I guess, themselves, and this is a five-year contract for $2.5 million.
Item 16 is just the receipt and file of lawsuits that the county has been served with since the last, over the last month. Just to point out, you're seeing these on your agenda now rather than individual agenda items pursuant to the resolution that you adopted earlier this year.
Item number 17 is a reappointment of special magistrates for code enforcement. So this is a new three-year contract, does increase the rate from 175 to $190 per hour. Item number 18 is a affordable housing construction loan to Delmar Terrace South for multifamily rental housing. This is a $500,000 loan. The project has 65 multifamily affordable units, 10 that are restricted to 55 or 50% AMI and 55 units as 60% AMI. We had pre, and so this is a loan, and this is, let's see, where's that at? I'm sorry, lost my notes here. This piece is a loan. We previously provided a million dollars for the project, and then St. Peters provided, St. Petersburg provided $334,000 for the project.
Question?
Question.
So the first million dollars, that was what do you, our traditional partnership out of the penny for the affordable housing? And then this, how is this loan looked at differently? Or how is it, how do we look at that from our global fund?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Tom to address this.
And I'm seeing now that it's ship dollars, so.
It is, it's state.
It is, it's state dollars. So and we actually provide loans not only for rental assistance, but in this manner too. Typically, we have a portfolio of about $76 million that we have provided in assistance for affordable housing. The loan is designed to ensure that we give it as a loan, if they don't meet the requirement of our ability, then they will have to repay the loan.
But these are state dollars.
But they're state dollars.
But normally, they would be repaying the loan and?
They would repay the loan based on the term of the agreement, yes.
So the, I guess, they repay the loan, then we can recycle that into?
We do. As a matter of fact, out of the $76 million that we give our loan, we receive about a little over $3 million of back every year, and we take those dollars, reinvest those dollars into other projects, and it covered the 10% cost of the staff.
Okay, thank you.
Item number 19 is four more penny for Pinellas Affordable Housing Projects. This is a result of round three. So you have four projects here, the first one being Whispering Pines Apartments. This is $680,000 for 20 multifamily affordable units, restricting them to 60% of area median income. The next one is a funding recommendation for 6D90 on Central Avenue. This is $3.5 million. This will include 204 new multifamily mixed income units consisting of 42 units at 80% or below, and 141 units at 120% or below, and 21 market rate units. The third project is for Inver by Volunteers of America for a million dollars. This project is a 51-unit affordable complex that will be serving households earning 60% or less of area median income. And I forgot to say on the first one, the 20-unit multi for Whispering Pines, this serves special needs families with children, and so that's a specialty area. And then the fourth project is O'Curse Terrace by Southport for $6.7 million for 220 mid-rise, serving 60% or less of area median income. And this is, that's within the city of Pinellas Park. So what you, you know, it really kind of shows you, so these four projects brings our total commitment to $23.4 million and 884 affordable housing units so far. This is the last of the rounds of affordable housing projects, and so, for instance, in this, we had 10 applications. We're continuing to work with the other six, but rather than have rounds, we're going to just bring those in and we'll continue to work with people. And when the projects are ready, then we can bring those forward for your consideration. And if you recall right, we didn't know exactly how many we were going to get in, and we were concerned about having funding issues, but they've been spaced out, it's worked out pretty well, and so I think that we can just continue to work with them, and that was the change that we made at the last, the last housing resolution. Any questions on these?
It just, I'm just looking real quickly at this, I haven't gone through it in detail, but you have two projects that are targeting just 60% and under. And you have whether it's $20, $20,000, I'm sorry, $20,000 an acre or per unit kind of cost, and then the other one's about $30,000, so just. And then when you get down to the mixed income, it rises to about, and I'm just talking about on the 80% and under, it rises up to, you know, say $90 or $90,000. But it does, that does not include any of the 141 units that are 120% and under. So I'm assuming that the person that's working with us is kind of looking at these as far as value goes with our, with our affordable housing dollar.
Yeah, we look at the subsidy per unit, and so units that are 120, 80 to 120, we expect a lower subsidy for those than the units that are 80% or below. In the same way, we would pay more for, you know, targeted groups like with the special needs on a per-unit basis because it's harder to serve and it costs more. So, so we do look at those, and those are all factored into the evaluation criteria.
I mean, clearly, I think there's a, we like the idea of those mixed income developments. I mean, I think that there's, we've talked about that a lot here, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the, on the second one, the DDA 6D90 on Central, just in the narrative, it says it's downtown St. Petersburg, whereas nowhere near downtown St. Petersburg.
How about, maybe St. Petersburg would take out the downtown.
I know when realtors are selling properties and they say it's, you know, downtown, they extend that all the way out to Central, but.
So then a cab ride?
We're well onto the West Side now.
Okay, I'll have them correct that.
Any, any other questions for Barry on that one? Okay.
But, you know, I think when we, when we started this program early, you know, year and a half into it, and, you know, we've, we're, they're putting out a lot of units, so they're really moving to try to move things quicker rather than later, so.
And, you know, and I know you're keeping track of the number of units that we're doing, so it'll be good to see that from time to time.
Right.
Progress is being made. Thanks.
Item 20 is in agreement with.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Peters has a question.
So when they get these contracts, and even the ones that we've given before, given the cost of materials, are they still going on the same timeline on these projects? Because I read an article how many developers are not following through on their contracts, and they're dropping out of their contracts because of the cost, the high cost of materials, and they don't want to be held to that number. So, you know, I don't know if we have an update as to whether or not our people are working on time, or are they going to stall for a year until prices possibly come down?
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I'll ask Tom to come up and see if he has any insight. I mean, it's a good point, and you see the item, actually, item number 18, that was because of a result of unanticipated project cost increases that they needed the loan. And so, you know, you're certainly seeing some of that, I just don't know how much.
You make an excellent point, Commissioner, and to Barry's point, that previous item is because of increases. What we're seeing is it costs about $36,000 more because of the cost of material today. We are working very closely with projects that we have approved previously. We are working very closely with the developer days developing Leominhee to see if the cost increasing costs are going to impact that project. But the one they have come in today that we are including as a recommendation, they took into account some of those increases, so. The one that we're the most concerned is the one that we approved previously, and we're working with them.
Okay, and so, so there's a possibility that if this comes down in six months, they may come in under budget?
Well, remember, a lot of these are just now beginning, that by the time they get through the permitting process and stuff, you're, you're talking some, they may, it may be a year or more before these, these projects actually go.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I'm sure they're, they're probably looking at some of those timelines and watching the market to be able to, before they actually break ground.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is a good point, because, I mean, we talked about that yesterday on the penny funding right now, expecting this much project to be done with the money, but it's going, it's going down right now because of the cost of goods sold, et cetera. So we're going to have that issue across the board, not getting as much for our dollar that we thought we would be three years ago, or even a year, year and a half ago. So hopefully, those, that'll change.
Well, you saw the futures for board foot on lumber like tanked two days ago, so maybe that's a, a good sign, you know, that that, that it's catching up, but we'll, we'll see. We're going to have to track all these, but these are our partners, and we're going to continue to work with them, you know, and, and to make these projects reality, so, yeah.
Just one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say the, the summary sheets that are attached in the, are very helpful, clear, bullet information of each project, so that was very helpful to look at each project. The only other thing I'd say is that every once in a while, we should remind, when we're doing the presentation, remind what is the average income number, so when people see 60% or 80%, we actually put a dollar number next to that, because I don't think, you know, most people correlate to what their salary is, to what that actually is in the percentage of things, so.
Good point.
Great point. Go ahead.
Okay, item number 20 is agreement with the Sixth Judicial Circuit Court for the drug court expansion program, and this, let's see. Oh, this facilitates the transfer of legislative funds to the court for that expansion. Item number 21 is funding recommendations from the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Trust Fund. This is from a $15 fee collected by the circuit court, and so this is how they're going to allocate that for the next year. Item 22 is appointments to Career Source, one business seat expiring on the 20, the June 30th, and one education and training seat. Item number three is reappointments, approval of 12 reappointments to Career Source. Item number 24 is renewal of the MOU and infrastructure funding between the Career Source and the partners. And item number 25 is the program year 21, 22 planning budget for them.
Any comments, questions on any of that Career Source? Okay, thank you.
Under item number 26, I'm asking for your authority to initiate litigation on the case that's referenced. This is a code enforcement case that involves a number of violations on a property in unincorporated Largo. Under item number 27, this is the placeholder for any redistricting issues or questions that may come up. Nothing due for me to report to you all in that regard.
We're still on the same timeframe, thinking about appointments in August, is that?
Yes, as, that's currently our plan. Haven't seen any additional information on release of census data, so hopefully, hopefully the federal government is still on track to release it per the previously modified schedule.
And again, we each have an appointment, and then we appoint four others?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll continue to monitor to make sure that those folks that have applied are still with us. I think they, we've done some of that, and it seems to be going pretty well, that their folks are still interested. The timing was a lot different than they originally thought, so.
It's a lot different, and it will certainly be a compressed schedule when that board does in fact start meeting.
Okay.
If I could also mention, I am seeking advice from the county commission on litigation, to which the county is currently a party. We have noticed a meeting to discuss this pending litigation for Tuesday at 12:30. That meeting notice is up on the county's calendar at this point, and I will have additional announcements in this regard when we convene at 12:30 on Tuesday, June 22nd. Here, we will start in a public meeting here in the Magnolia Room, and then recess to a private conference room, well, a room that will be only for commissioners and allowable staff here in this building. And then we will, we will end the shade meeting back here in the Magnolia Room, and it'll be just prior to your regularly scheduled county commission meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you. Barry?
And we will have Jennifer Brackney here to give her quarterly update.
Okay.
From Career Source. 29 is appointments to the Tourism Development Board.
I have a question on 29.
Yeah.
On the, we have four applicants, two are hotel and two are other tourism related, but I guess we have one member who is or, is listed as or hotel or tourism related, and so we're currently, we have two that are full hotel, and then one other, or or, I'm sorry, one or. So how does that fit in with the statute requirement of three, no less than three, no more than four hotel related?
I know, I know that all of you are aware that, you know, Michael Zoss is our expert in this regard, I know that he has taken a look at this. You know, I'll take a look at the roster, you know, in advance of Tuesday, but I believe the way that they have things set up for you all as far as the voting and the ballot is drafted, that it will ensure that you all maintain that required minimum.
There's actually an applicant's memo from Michael, TDC applicant's memo that explains who's, who's eligible. On page two.
Yeah, but we, and we do, we do have three right now.
Correct.
Already, so.
Well, we, yes, we have, I guess, that or is throwing me off a little bit, when we have Mr. Williams who's listed on the roster as hotel or tourism related, not one or the other. And I guess really, Mr. Prather could be listed, since he operates a hotel and a restaurant, and so he could be an or. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're staying in line with the number of hotel representatives that we're supposed to have.
And I'll double check with Michael. I know that he really goes through these applications when they come in with CBB staff to make sure that the requirements are being met, that the folks are eligible, and that we are maintaining that balance. So I'll touch base with him, but I know that he has pretty thoroughly looked into this.
Okay.
Okay.
Then you got commission reports. We do have a presentation from the Youth Advisory Board at 6 o'clock, and then we move into our public hearings. We have one, two, three, so we have four public hearings. The first is a zoning change from our four, one, two, three, unit residential to employment E2, .69 acres in West Sloman. Local planning agency approved the request 7-0. One letter of opposition was received. Item number 33 is a request for zoning change from general commercial to our three single-family residential, .65 acres at Guten Crossing in unincorporated Largo. This applicant proposing to develop three single-family residential units on three separate locks, which is the maximum that would be allowed. Local planning agency recommended it 7-0. No one spoke in favor, and no correspondence been received. Item number 34 is change from general office to urban residential with a conditional overlay. The conditional overlay would limit the number of residential units to 10 single-family attached dwellings. The development agreement's in your packet. This local planning agency voted 7-0. No one appeared in favor. One letter of no objection was received from the city of Clearwater. And item 35 is a request for land use change from residential low to residential high on 1.14 acres in unincorporated Largo. Local. Local planning agency unanimously recommended approval. Two people appeared in opposition. They cited potential impacts on existing drainage to the properties that are north. I'll have to get a staff update on this. The property north's in the city of Largo, and city of Largo staff agreed to reach out to the property owners. We've received no formal correspondence at this point.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, anybody, before we adjourn, does anybody have anything they want to bring up now? And obviously, we can do that on Tuesday, like we normally do. I have one thing, if nobody else has anything. Just so you know, Jim Nixon from the city of St. Petersburg has reached out to FDOT to light the Skyway Bridge for Pride Month. And, and so they've basically gone back and forth a little bit, and have sent something to me from Nixon, telling me what I can do and not do to do, to provide that approval. I reached out to FDOT to confirm that indeed I knew what that policy was, and I've played phone tag a little bit. I'll be meeting with the, or talking to the, to our district guy, the head guy, just to talk a little bit about their policy and what they require of us. And I, but he, as he said, David Gwynn, he, said he would clarify what is needed from this body. So my intention is to have Juul draft a resolution of no objection, but I, but we'll have that conversation either on Tuesday, and if it's, if there's some time thing that makes it sooner, I'll bring it tomorrow for conversation. So let me, you know, it's always last minute. You know, this is month of June, we're about halfway through the month, and this request is coming in. So I just wanted to put everybody kind of on notice for that. We'll either have that discussion tomorrow or Tuesday, looking for a letter of no objection. That's the intent. So we'll see how that pans out. I have to have the conversation with David Gwynn first, and then bring that information and clarity back here to you all. Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to share that I know typically, you know, the bridge has been lit for the occasion. I know we're going to talk about it more, but just wanted to share. But then when the, if I have my facts correct, when the order came from the governor about not lighting the bridges, then that's when the individual requests started going out to the different counties to see if it was something that they could do. So I'm not, I'm just sharing, you know, it's, it's been a conversation, you know.
It has been. And some, and I think they kind of went through this process over in Jacksonville, just real recently, and I guess they got community support. FDOT turned it down, and then the governor's office overturned it because there was local support and said, you can move forward with it. So again, I just want to be clear from FDOT what their, what their requirements are and what needs to be in a resolution to give, you know, to give them what they need. But in any event, we'll either have that conversation tomorrow briefly, or on Tuesday. That's my preference, to do it in a meeting, but we'll see how that goes, okay? Anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.